Pursuant to chapter two of the Acts of 2023, on March 20, 2023, Governor Mara Healy signed into law an act making appropriations for fiscal year 2023 to provide for supplementing certain existing appropriations and certain other activities and projects. This act includes an extension until March 31, 2025 of the remote meeting provisions. And the June 24, 2024 Select Board meeting will be conducted by remote participation. And I will grant permission to Westwood Media to record this event. Is there anyone else who wants to record it or anything audible or video? It's great. Folks, let me just say at the beginning here, if you wish to participate, with the exception of two individuals, and Tish, I think we touched base with those folks, right? Please type your name, address into the chat room, raise your hand, and we'll give you two minutes to speak. Let's go on to the chairs update. Summer paving. Todd and his team will be paving, estimating to start around July 8, and will include Gay Street, Thatcher Street to Washington Street, Brookfield Road, Marshall Street, Hein Lane, Beacon Street, Shaker Detours will be set up according to the message boards will be set up in advance to provide more information. In addition, the paving schedule and any other print information will be posted at the TBW work page or on the town website. The next item is the rec program, another stellar year for them. They've set up a great program for the kids this summer. Rec Department Summer Camp starts this week and staff is ready to rock and roll. The summer camp will run for seven weeks from June 24 until August 29, each week being a special theme, Party in the USA or Disney. Over 250 elementary school and middle school kids are registered for each week of the camp, and approximately 100, 200 children are registered for specialty programs such as preschool, sports, art, theater, science programs throughout the summer. Over 100, kudos to the rec staff. Over 100 part-time staff have been hired to work at the summer camp. Some of these are new hires and may come in as, and some may come in as CIT's Councils and Training, offered each year by the rec department to promote leadership skills for our young adults. And many of these, and many of these young adults, they, it might be their first job. So thank you to work in his team. It's always, always very, very successful. Chris, do you have any updates for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to share with the community, this was a letter we received from Harper Wyatt, who's a third grader, and he is encouraging the town to compost more. I have shared this information with our DPW. Certainly want to thank Wyatt for taking the time, oh, excuse me, Harper, for taking the time to write this letter and to encourage us as a community to compost more. Also, we have some information regarding our senior center. Our Council on Aging will be closed on July 29 and 30 due to repairs. There's a pipe in the kitchen that needs to be removed. They won't have any water in the building during that time. This would prevent them from opening. However, Meals on Wheels will work out of another site. So COA will continue to provide meals to our seniors, to those recipients from that. We plan to have the pipe fixed by the 30th. If there's any extended delay, we will certainly let people know. Those are my updates, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Chris.
Chairman, you have, you have three comments in the chat.
It's two. Okay, I'm ready. Tish, do you want to read the first one?
Sure. Actually, the first one says not able to access the chat.
The chat isn't what would work. You would just put your email address in the Q and A and your question can go in there.
My apologies for that first. Thanks, Rob.
And Gary Assalia, 9 Adams Street, has the dead and wet some water been notified of Gay Street paving? The water lines are due to be replaced in 2030 due to age.
We can certainly let Todd know that that's the case.
So that would, Pat, that would be six years down the road, correct?
It would. We usually after, we usually don't allow, we try to avoid interruption of roads for five to 10 years after they've been repaved.
Okay.
I, I will send an email to, to Todd to let him know.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Thanks, Gary. Appreciate it. Was there one more? It looks like there is one more, Tish.
It's just response from Gary Assalia. Thank you.
Okay. So next on our agenda is a public hearing for unattended donation containers UDC from CMRK Incorporated, 845 High Street, also known as St. Margaret Mary's Church Parking Lot and 157 Washington Street, AKA St. Dennis Church Parking Lot. We're going to hold a public rehearing on this request of unattended donation containers, which will be placed at these two sites. I believe we have Nora and Judy to walk us through this.
I'll be happy to make a motion to open the hearing, Joe.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Rob?
Second.
I hereby move that the Select Board open the June 24, 2020 for public hearing for unattended donation container license for CMRK Inc. For containers at 845 High Street, the St. Margaret Mary Church Parking Lot and 157 Washington Street, the St. Dennis Church Parking Lot.
Second that motion open there.
Roll call, Rob?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
I?
I vote I as well. Ms. Nora, you're here. Excellent. Will you be so kind?
I would. So we received an application for two unattended donation container sites from Ken Fiscaldo, who is parish council member at the Westwood Parishes, St. Margaret Mary and St. Dennis. And the proposal is for CMRK Inc. to operate these unattended donation bins. There'll be one at St. Dennis Church and a double bin at St. Margaret Mary's Church. They're actually already in place. I think they may have gone up last fall. And after they were recognized, Karen Flynn reached out to Ken to let him know that there's licensing required from the Select Board for unattended donation containers. So Ken began, began the process, and the first step in that is to receive administrative environmental impact design review to make sure that the, the bins are placed in a proper area where they don't interfere with traffic. So that was done, and the town planner Elijah Romulus granted administrative EIDR, EIDR approval for both St. Dennis and St. Margaret Mary's on April 23. The application was then filed for the Select Board licenses for the unattended donation containers, which are, would be fully in conformance with those EIDR approvals. One point of information that I wanted to relay is that the donations will be picked up by CMRK, and they are scheduled for three to four times a week or as needed, so that we wouldn't have to worry about any overflow of the containers. And I note that both Judy from CMRK is here as well as Ken, from Ken Fiscaldo from the Parish Council.
Right. Mary Ann or Rob, do you have any questions?
I do.
Go ahead. Sorry.
I know that CMRK Inc. is a for-profit corporation. Am I correct in assuming that some portion of the donated items will be going to charity?
I think that's a question for Ken to see if the Westwood Parishes receive some charitable contribution from this.
Just for full disclosure for residents, I think it's important for folks to know where the donations go and what, in what percentage, if that's possible to know.
Ken, you're on mute. If you could unmute and answer that question? He fell off, so let me see if he's back in.
I see that Judy added into the chat. That is correct. Judy, if you could indicate a percentage or dollar amount to answer the question?
Hold on, she fell off as well. Let me bring her back in.
Looks like donations benefit the Society of St. Vincent de Paul.
Hi, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Judy and with CMRK. And that is correct. A portion is given back to the Society of St. Vincent de Paul.
Are you able to say what portion?
I don't because that is an agreement between CMRK and Society of St. Vincent. I'm not sure how that's set up. Unfortunately, I don't have that directly in front of my hands. That is something that I can definitely provide to you guys in the future. I apologize. I didn't realize this was going to be a question that was going to be asked. So I was not prepared at all. So I do apologize for that inconvenience.
No worries at all. Thank you for the information.
No, no worries. Thank you.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Let me bring Ken back in. He's back. Here he comes.
Hello?
Hey, Ken.
Hi. Sorry about that. The, this is done on the Archdiocesan basis, which the Archdiocese of Boston covers basically Eastern Massachusetts. So what we do at St. Margaret Mary's and at St. Dennis and any of the collection boxes, they get collected by CMRK, and they are sorted out. And some of the usable clothing goes into the thrift stores for sale to people that don't have the means to purchase them retail. And the rest gets sold as rags, basically. And then that money pays at the Archdiocesan level of St. Vincent de Paul, and they use that to help people in need. And also, some of the times, we can receive money from the Archdiocesan St. Vincent de Paul to help us with our local people in need.
Thank you very much, Ken.
Ken, was there a fee associated with this application?
Yes, there were several fees. Fees for filing with the planning board. Nora has better handle on that. And we had to set, file separate fees for each location as well as pay the, for the notice of this hearing to the local newspaper, which we haven't received an invoice for yet.
Mary Ann, I'm glad you asked that question because I know on the Conservation Commission, we, when we had held a hearing, it was held at the local level as also held at the state level. And there was a fee associated with each of those. Generally, I can tell you for St. Margaret Mary, St. Dennis, and for the temple, we waive the local fee because it being a charity. But now I'm a little bit confused because of what the card that you put on the table. But I wouldn't be averse to waiving the fee unless I'm opening up Pandora's Box, Pat, because it is a charity and they are, you know, when the house burned down next to me, that society was very generous in helping those folks get back on their feet. I don't know how you guys feel about that. Or if we can waive the local fee.
If I could just make just a couple of comments. One, there, there are different types of fees. So there are fees for, for the administrative EIDR review. I believe that's a hundred dollar fee. The unattended donation container licensing fee before the Select Board is a $250 fee. And I don't believe that it's been the policy of the Select Board in the past to waive these fees. It's, it's within your rights if you choose to do that. But I do want to just point out that other unattended donation containers have been granted licenses. There's one at Temple Beth David. There's one at the First Baptist Church, and there are several at the Senior Center. And I believe in all cases, the fees were charged.
Nora, were those for charities?
They're all for charities, yes. It's rare to have an unattended donation container that's not associated with a charity.
Yeah, I was thinking of the books thing that we worked on a little while ago.
That was one of them. That's Westwood Friends, the Library, and they were charged the fee. The temple was charged the fee, and First Parish, First Baptist Church, I'm sorry, was also charged the fee.
All right, Nora, maybe we can look at that down the road. The whole path of where we are now, as Rob, you and Mary Ann agree. I think there's looking at, but not tonight.
Yeah, I, this isn't something I think you want to change on the fly, Joe.
Sure.
I think you want to take a comprehensive look at this. And if you're going to change the policy, make a policy decision.
I am fine with it as is. I appreciate the thought. But if other charities have been treated this way, then we should be no different. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thanks, Ken, for weighing in on that. Mary Ann, Rob, you guys all set?
I'm also, Joe, I do want to highlight to you, there are two people with hands raised in the, in the panelist or the attendees, sorry, not the panelists, we're the panelists, but the attendees side of the house. I don't know if
I don't see them.
One, just, one just put her hand down. And the other, I believe, is an upcoming agenda item. So I don't know if there's something in advance that that person is looking to do.
Then we should probably take it up when we discuss that topic, Rob. I can't, I can't see it.
Yeah, if you, if you go to the bottom of your screen and just click where it says participants, about the third button from the left-hand side, you will see a split panel over there where you can see panelists and attendees. And you'll see one of the attendees has his hand up.
Wow, you're quick. Who's, who's asking, Rob?
Todd Sullivan.
Okay, why don't we, I think Todd can sit tight. All right. Are there any questions from the public on this, unless Todd, that was your issue? I'm going to assume no. Would anyone like to make a motion on this?
I'd be happy to. I move that the Select Board grant an unattended donation container license to CMRK Inc. for containers to be located at 845 High Street and 157 Washington Street, and for the Select Board electronic signature to be affixed to the licenses.
Second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Rob?
Nope. Oh, you're taking the roll? I vote I in favor of the motion.
Thanks, Rob. Mary Ann?
I vote I.
And I vote I as well. I guess I got that backwards, Rob. I'll, I'll, I'll get it right by the second or third thing here. All right. Thank you, Nora. Nora, you doing our next one as well?
I am, yes.
Excellent.
First, we, Joe, one moment. First, we have to close the public hearing.
Yeah, you have to close the public hearing, Joe.
That's not in my crypt sheet. Okay. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I hereby move that the Select Board close the June 24, 2020 for public hearing for unattended donation container licenses for CMRK for containers at 845 High Street and 157 Washington Street.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote I as well. So now I'll take a motion to open a here, the hearing for the Wine and Malt Common Vitteler License and Entertainment License at Gina Castle LLC, doing, excuse me, doing business as Blue Orchid Restaurant, 927 High Street.
I hereby move that the Select Board open the June 24, 2024 public hearing for Section 12 Wine and Malt slash Common Vitteler License and Entertainment License for Virginia Castle LLC DBA Blue Orchid Restaurant at 927 High Street.
Second.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
And I vote I as well. Ms. Nora, you're on.
All right. Well, thank you. So this application is for Blue Orchid Restaurant at 927 High Street. And as you may recall, the prior owner had an all alcohol license and CB license and an entertainment license for this facility. Prior to the sale of the property, the former owner decided they were not interested in continuing that, and they switched to just a CB license. When Virginia Castle LLC purchased the property, they purchased it and applied for the CB license alone. And they have not, since they've been operating since 2023, October 2023, when they purchased the property, they've only operated under a CB license. So the new owners have now decided that they are interested in applying for a wine and malt beverages license to go along with their CB license. And that would then require an entertainment license. Entertainment licenses are only needed in association with alcohol licenses. So I believe we have the current manager of record, is she here? That's Xiaowu Chen? I don't know if she's attending tonight. But she has, her application has been reviewed. She's a resident of Walpole, so she lives close by. She has completed her Safe Serve Alcohol Certification and has favorable query results. She's replied to Karen Flynn, our alcohol, our licensing agent, with all the appropriate ABCC documents. And this was reviewed by the Alcohol Review Committee, which unanimously recommended approval of the license by the Select Board. I'll also mention the hours. The hours will not change. They're the same as they are currently. That's Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturday, they stay open from 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. And on Sunday, from 12:00 noon to 10:00 p.m. So those hours would be their hours for CB alcohol license and entertainment license.
Mr. Chairman, I believe they are represented by Attorney Chen tonight, who's on the panel. And you can address any questions to him, I suspect, Attorney Chen.
Thank you, Pat, and Attorney Chen, thank you so much for joining us. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for recognizing me. I appreciate the opportunity. I was expecting Xiaoyan Chen to join us. She may be having trouble getting on, but I'm here and happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you very much, sir. And I think Michelle is here. Is that correct, Nora? That's the right question? Yeah.
Yes, she's here.
Mary Ann or Rob, any questions?
I have no questions. Thank you.
None from me.
Any questions from the audience that are missing, Rob?
Nothing that I see, Joe.
Thanks, Rob. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I have two motions I'd like to make. Number one, that the Select Board approve Xiaoyan Chen as the manager of Record Virginia Castle LLC DBA Blue Orchid Restaurant.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? I'm sorry, Mary Ann, roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote I as well.
And secondly, I move that the Select Board approve a new Section 12 Wine and Malt slash Common Vitteler License and Entertainment License for Blue Orchid Restaurant, 927 High Street, pending ABCC approval, and for the Select Board electronic signatures to be affixed to the Blue Orchid Section 12 License, Entertainment License, and ABCC Local Licensing Authority form.
Second that motion.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote I as well. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I hereby move that the Select Board close the June 24, 2024 public hearing for Section 12 Wine and Malt slash Common Vitteler License and Entertainment License, Virginia Castle LLC DBA Blue Orchid Restaurant, 927 High Street.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote I as well. Attorney Michelle, thank you so much for joining us. Wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Have a good evening.
You too. Now, our next item on the agenda is adaptive reuse of the Obit Baker House 909 High Street request for modification as of 11122. Select Board decision to accept modified proposal from Todd C. Sullivan Construction Company LLC in response to the RFP Econ-22-R-003. We're going to review this modification. And I'm not really sure, Nora, Nora and Todd, Nora, do you want to lead off with this?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, and I'm not opening this as a hearing, right? Pat would just
It's just a discussion, not a public hearing.
Okay.
Not a public hearing.
So
Thank you.
To get you started, so this is in relation to an RFP that the town issued for the Obit Baker House. As you may recall, the town offered several RFPs beginning in 2014. The seventh RFP was issued last, in, in, sorry, in October of 2021, and Todd Sullivan submitted a proposal in November of 2021. That proposal was accepted by the Select Board in January of 2022. Since that time, Todd went through the process of obtaining Planning Board and Conservation Commission approvals. That process took from about March 23 through August 23. And then there was actually a closing where the Obit Baker House property, both the parcel that holds the historic home and the cemetery barn, as well as the adjacent vacant parcel, were sold to Todd in December of 2023. After that, Todd began removing debris from the wetland area and investigating further the condition of the historic Obit Baker House. In reviewing the Obit Baker House, he uncovered shims in the foundation of the two, the fireplace and the beehive oven, both of which he had proposed in his original proposal that was accepted by the board in January 2022. He, he had intended to preserve both of those items. When he found that they are, at least the beehive oven is shimmed, I don't think he knows for sure that the fireplace is, but the expectation is that it's handled the same way, he raised questions of structural instability. And he asked our Building Commissioner, Mike Perkins, if he could obtain a demolition permit for those portions of the building. Mike responded that in order to get a demolition permit or any building permit associated with the building, he had to be in compliance with the proposal that the board accepted in January 2022. So we've worked with Todd for months now, and he submitted a modified proposal that he'd like the board to consider that does a few different things, one of which is allows for the removal of the beehive oven and the fireplace. The proposal also would modify the size of the Obit Baker House addition. When Todd submitted his application in November 21, he thought he was adding about 2,000 square feet to the back of the Obit Baker House. The intention is to convert that from a single-family home to two dwelling units, two separate dwelling units, one on the first floor and one on the second floor. The actual size of the addition would be such that the overall home would be expanded to be 2,548 square feet. The proposal also called for a veterinary clinic to be built on the vacant land. And the original proposal showed for that clinic to be 4,000 square feet. I think the dimensions were 40 feet by 100 feet. The proposal changed over time. It's now 44 feet by 96 feet with a second story, and it amounts to a total square footage of 5,936 square feet. So Todd's modified proposal is also, also asking So Todd's modified proposal is also, also asking the board to approve changes to both the Obed Baker House dimensions and the dimensions of the proposed veterinary unit, veterinary clinic. In addition, when Todd began this process, he had a buyer for the veterinary clinic, a gentleman who was intending to purchase the land and have Todd build the building so he could have it operated by his son as a veterinary clinic. In February of this year, we heard from that gentleman that he was no longer interested in pursuing it because the cost of the project had grown beyond his ability to handle it. He had originally expected the total cost to be about four point three million, and it had mushroomed to between five and five and a half million, so he walked away. So Todd's modified proposal now asks the board to consider a broader category of uses. Instead of just having a veterinary clinic to allow any office of a healthcare professional and or a hair salon, I'm sorry. He originally was looking at a hair salon, he's asking the board to approve an office of a healthcare professional and or a personal establishment, personal establishment could include a hair salon, but it could include other things as well. So that's another proposal that is being requested. I mentioned that the property was sold by the town to Todd in December of twenty twenty three. The proposal called for the sale price. The original RFP called for the sale price to be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or eight dollars per square foot, whichever is less. Todd's proposal in November twenty twenty one proposed purchasing only forty thousand square feet of the property and offered three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in conformance with that proposal. Also noted in the proposal that it would be eight dollars per square foot, and calculate that eight dollars per square foot for forty thousand square feet to be three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Well, by the time the project was submitted for planning board and conservation commission approval, the intent was no longer to just have purchased forty thousand square feet, but to purchase the entirety of both properties, which is which amounts to sixty five thousand eight hundred and seventy seven, eight hundred and eighty seven square feet. So the total price for the property is six thousand, sixty five thousand eight hundred and eighty seven square feet times eight dollars per square foot, which amounts to more than the three hundred and twenty thousand dollar purchase price. If you look at the property as it has been sold, Todd is now offering to sell back or donate back to the town the wetlands portion, which he calculates at fifteen thousand five hundred square feet. So now, if you take the full property he purchased and subtract the area that he's offering to donate back to the town, presume, assuming that the, that that's accepted by the town, which may require a town meeting procedure or may not, that's something that town council is looking into. But if that land is sold, is donated back to the town, now the, the price per square foot for the fifty thousand three hundred and eighty seven square feet that Todd would hold, remain ownership of, that amounts to six dollars and thirty five cents per square foot, not the eight dollars per square foot that's in the original accepted proposal and in the RFP. So Todd's modified proposal asks the select board to acknowledge that the purchase price is less than the price that was requested in the RFP and offered in his proposal. And that the, for the select board to determine if that is a sufficient price for the land to be paid, for the land to be purchased. And then an additional offer that Todd, that Todd makes as part of his modified proposal is he offers to make a seventy five hundred dollar contribution to, to the town's aid for the elderly fund. So as, just as a reminder, Todd can go over more fine points on what his proposal is. But just as a reminder, the intention of, of offering the property for sale through all of the RFPs from twenty fourteen on was to see the historic property restored and put into a good use and to see a compatible commercial use established on the adjacent land to return the property to the tax rolls and to see fiscal, positive fiscal effects to the town as soon as possible.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order. I've looked at the war article that allowed us to dispose of the property. And the article has all the normal language you want to take any other action there too. But it's all in terms of dis- disposing of the property. There's nothing in there that talks about accepting property back, so I believe we would need a warrant article to accept the donation of fifteen thousand square feet of wetlands back, but that can be put on the spring town meeting.
Thank you, Pat.
So one other thing I, I probably should also point out, the reason this is here before you tonight, and the reason why time is of the essence in this. The town's building code has a stretch code provision. On July first, the residential section of the stretch code changes in a manner that significantly increases the requirements for making a, a property environmentally sound, and it increased the costs of restoring a historic building significantly. So we have been discussing this with Todd for several months, and our building commissioner, Mike Perkins, expressed concern that there was, he was not able to apply for a building permit because he was not in conformance with the original proposal that the board accepted. But if he didn't apply for a building permit before July first, then the cost of construction in conformance with the advanced stretch code would apply. And so Todd has submitted this modified proposal, he's also submitted an application to the planning board requesting changes to the Obed Baker House to remove the beehive oven and the fireplace, to add artificial chimneys that would appear the same, they would be brick veneer chimneys. So from the exterior of the building, still looks like the same historic structure with the fireplaces as it would appear currently, but they would not actually have the fireplaces. So he's applied for that a request for the select board to approve the modified proposal tonight, the planning board to consider a modification to the special permit tomorrow night. And if both of those are approved, he'll be able to apply for his building permit prior to the July first start of the intensified stretch code.
Thanks, Nora, great synopsis, appreciate it. Good job. Mary Ann, any thoughts or comments?
Yeah. So as Nora said, there's clearly a very long history with respect to the Obed Baker building and townwide interest in restoring it. And Mr. Sullivan, of course, we're, we're pleased that you committed to doing that as well as to bringing in a, a new commercial building and business, and we're very interested in seeing that happen. I understand that time is of the essence for you as a developer, given the stretch code and, and the costs. But time is of the essence for us as well, in terms of seeing the Obed Baker house restored and, and also the commercial building that was part of the RFP. So I guess my question is, assuming that a modification is allowed, when can we expect to see that done?
Good afternoon, oh, good evening, board. The project would go like this. I need to build the new cemetery shed and complete that before I can get the occupancy for the commercial building. Is that correct, Nora? Is that the process?
Occupancy, yes, you could build the commercial structure prior to taking down the, the existing cemetery barn, but you don't, you can't get occupancy until you take it down.
Right. So, Mary Ann, that's the process, I'll build the new, and I'm ready to, ready to build the the new cemetery shed right away. So, and as well as the Obed Baker, eager to get going. The the commercial building, we're asking to broaden our opportunities to find different tenants. That's basically it. As soon as I get an RFP and we've got some people that are interested, hopefully that bears fruit, and it's a good location, I don't see a problem with finding a tenant.
I have a question for you.
That's basically the process.
Two, two questions related to, you know, I assume that Mike Perkins agreed with the structural integrity piece of both the beehive and the fireplaces, so that's, that's something that really, from a safety perspective, should come out.
Are there pictures, are there pictures?
Yes.
That he uploaded, can we show the board those? They pretty much self-explanate.
Yeah, no, no, we saw them in the packet, I'm just saying, you know, Mike, Mike would have concurred with that, with the structural integrity issue, right?
So Mike reviewed the photos, he did not actually go to the site to see the conditions, he reviewed the photos and agreed that something would need to be done. That's not to say that they could not be shored up in place, but he understood Todd's request to remove them. Removal of the fireplace and especially of the beehive oven doesn't just address the potential structural issue. That if it was just the structural issue, could be addressed by shoring up, but it also provides additional interior space for a second means of egress for the second floor apartment, which if not, if you did not remove the beehive oven, you would be taking up additional living area to put in that stairway.
So, Rob, to answer your question, Mike wanted us to, to provide a, a second means of egress to the second floor apartment. It was thrown around, it was, the idea was put out there to bump up the addition on the rear, on the rear of it. But it would have, it would have loaded that stairway into a bedroom that was about twenty to twenty five feet from the primary stairway. The code reads the, the secondary stairway has to be at the opposite end of the building. So this is why we're gonna, you know, we're gonna load it from the front door, so now you have a access from the back of the building, access from the front of the building, and we won't be putting in a sprinkler system on the second floor.
Okay, but the second question was, Nora, I heard you read other very specific uses, commercial uses. Are those the only uses allowed within the overlay district that is there? I, I, I want to just understand, at this point, why would we constrain what the opportunity is to get a viable commercial business into this building, which is, you know, it's been ten years now that we've been trying to do something with this building. To me, I don't want to put another set of artificial handcuffs on things if in fact the overlay district allows for a broader set of uses.
So the over, so right now, just to be clear, the special permit is for one use only, it allows a veterinary clinic, that's it. So any changes would have to go back to the planning board and they would have to modify the special permit. They could modify it to allow any use that's allowable within the FMUOD district as, as a commercial use. But there have been concerns since twenty fourteen, when the first RFP was put out, about what type of use would be appropriate there. The traffic situation is extremely constrained, and the site distance from the drive where you exit the cemetery or you exit the Obed Baker House is also very limited. You're coming out on a curve and it's a very difficult situation. So it was recognized by the town in each of the RFPs that they submitted that the, the types of commercial uses that they would allow would be very limited to low commercial, low traffic uses. So a retail use is not something that we were looking for there, nor is a restaurant use. Two uses that are otherwise allowed in the FMUOD, but just don't seem to work well at this site. There's also constraints for the parking that's available, there's only enough parking for particular uses. And we've picked out the uses that are permitted within FMUOD that have sufficient parking of, of no more than four spaces, four spaces per thousand square feet and that have low enough traffic concerns that we would not overburden the area. So that, that is why we're proposing office of a healthcare professional or a personal service establishment and not opening it to more broader categories like indoor, commercial indoor recreation, restaurant or retail.
Okay. You good with that, Rob?
Um, yeah, I guess because of the, the parking and, and the on the curb, that makes some sense, I'm just, I'm concerned that the narrow scope of the special permit is so constraining that, you know, it, it becomes almost impossible to fulfill if it was he had to go out and find another veterinarian, veterinary service, veterinarian clinic, it would be, you know, um, burdensome on top because he'd be handing all the leverage over to whomever the tenant would be.
Which is, which is why it's proposed for a modification tomorrow night by the planning board of the special permit. The special permit was not limited to veterinary by the planning board, that was the application that was applied for. So when you apply for an FMUOD special permit, you submit a very specific project and you get approval for that very specific project. So Todd is now going back for a modification for a broader project, and assuming the planning board grants approval of that, he would have a, a broader use. He's going back to ask the planning board about specific tenants or buyers that he has been talking to, one of which is a dentist and one of which is a hair salon owner. And the thought is that either he could go forward with a veterinary clinic, or he could go forward with a combined use where the first floor may be a dentist's office and the second floor a hair salon. But those are, are potential buyers, tenants that are still in talks with Todd that don't have a purchase and sales agreement in place.
Thank you, Nora. Now I'm gonna do, Rob, I'm gonna ask Todd if he has anything else he wants to say, then if there's your digesting this, you might have some other questions. Todd, is there anything else you want to say?
Um, the, the, yeah, let's address that, a use, the use a little bit more. So i- it, it seems like, it seems like this is gonna be a professional building, like an urgent care or a dentist or something like that, and.
Not an urgent care, urgent care would be a different use, that would be, that would be more of a medical clinic.
Okay, so the process is to bring this back to, to, whatever, whatever potential clients I get, it has to go back to the planning board, correct?
It does, so you will need a modification, modification of your special permit for the actual use that, the, the tenant that wants to go in there. You get the final modification, but the hope was you were going to the select board tonight with a broad enough category. And that's why we encouraged you, instead of requesting a dentist and a hair salon, we encourage you to request a, a modification that's broader than that and allows for any office of a healthcare professional and any personal establishment, personal care establishment to be allowed by the select board, still subject to the actual use approval by the planning board. So I just want to just also point out that, so this was offered at a significant discount. This is sixty five thousand eight hundred eighty seven square feet of prime commercial property on High Street in our downtown. It was offered for eight dollars a square foot, which is not the price that any other suitable property in a commercial area would go for. The town offered it at that reduced price because they understood the limitations placed on this by the, by the traffic and the parking, and we're offering it with these concerns, that the historic property be preserved and that a commercial use that's introduced at this area be compatible, compatible with the surrounding uses, including a cemetery and including residential uses nearby and difficult traffic concerns. So it's, it was not offered at a price that any commercial use could go in. If it was, then the town might not have offered it for such a low price.
Thank you, Nora. Todd, do you want to say anything in response to that?
No, I, I think the, the, the modification to our RFP, it, it, it speaks for itself.
Okay, and Rob, it sounds like Nora steered him down the road where you were going, is that correct? As far as giving him a little more opportunity for what to do there.
It sounds like there's greater opportunity that is compatible with the other, the surrounding area. So yes, I'm, I'm good with, you know, the, the expanded uses, so that it, it's not so narrowly defined that it makes it impossible for anybody to, for him to find an actual tenant, so.
It's, okay. Mary Ann, before I open it up to the public, any, anything else on, on your side?
Yes. I just wanted to better understand the timing. You started to explain about building the shed. When can we expect the Obed Baker House to be restored? And when can we expect the commercial building to be? And when can we expect the commercial building to be built?
I can get going on that as soon as I get permits. I don't have any, I don't have a building permit for either project.
Assuming you have the permits tomorrow, which I know isn't the case, you've got to go to the planning board, but assuming you had the permits tomorrow, when can we expect the Obed Baker?
Within the month, Mary Ann.
Oh, okay. Um, and, and how about the commercial building?
No, I'm, I need a tenant for that. So that's, that's, we're gonna roll up our sleeves and pursue that.
Rob, anything else at this time? Uh, yeah, one more question with respect to, um, the building part. So with respect to the stretch code that you talked about, Nora, the July first deadline for that. Todd, did I hear you just say you can't get a permit until you have a tenant because you can't apply for the special use? Uh, the, the, the special permit because it is contingent on what the end use will be. It, correct. Do you need the, do you need the permit in order to be able to be in compliance with the July first deadline? I'm, I'm a little unclear on that.
So I, I think I can clear that up. So the, uh, the stretch code requirements for commercial establishments kicked in last July. They already apply, but for a new commercial build, it doesn't make any difference. Um, you're gonna build a new commercial structure to the standards that the stretch code requires. So it's not a problem with a commercial building. The stretch code is a problem with the historic building. Where you have an old structure that you're putting an addition on. And if the new stretch code comes into play, when Todd puts the addition on the building, he would have to, which he will build, the new addition will be built to the stretch code, he would have to apply, um, the air pressure tests requirements to the historic portion of the building as well. If he does it after July first, if he does it before July first, if he gets his complete building permit application to the building commissioner before July first, he doesn't have to worry about that.
So it's driven off the timing of the application. That was the clarification.
It is. It's driven off the timing of the application and it's only significant for the Obed Baker House. Timing on the commercial structure is significant though. Not for, not for the stretch code, not for when he posts his building permit, but for when he receives a certificate of occupancy. That's important for two things. One, because that's when, um, the fiscal benefits to the town begin to accrue. Once you have a commercial tenant in there. But it's also important because Todd cannot occupy the two residential units he's constructing in the Obed Baker House until the commercial building is ready for occupancy. That is because this is properties being developed under flexible multiple use overlay district special permit. And that permit only allows residential use where it's no more than fifty percent of the overall square footage of property. And that section of our bylaws specifically requires the commercial portion of the project to come first. So, so Todd can get his permit, assuming the select board grants a modification, the planning board grants a modification and Todd completes his application. He can get his building permit under the old building permit, uh, requirements. Not have to worry about the stretch code. He can then construct that Obed Baker House fully. But he can't actually have anybody move in until he's also constructed the commercial building and had that ready for occupancy. So timing is very important on all aspects of this project.
So we should be moving ahead with getting, uh, Todd what he needs to be able to find a tenant. That seems like the, the thing that is important here in order to be able to have a, you know, viable commercial tenant and be able to get the, the residences occupied as well.
A- a- and to that end, we, we need to have the Obed Baker House restored. Um, that's gotta be done. Do we want to think about imposing a deadline for that to, um, you know, give, given, uh, the history, um, you know, given that the modification we're being asked to approve, um, given the urgency, a, as you've noted, Rob, as far as getting a, a commercial tenant in there. Um, do we want to think about imposing some kind of a, a deadline here as we think about the modification?
I don't know how I feel about a deadline because of the uncertainty and timing on how quickly he'll be able to get a tenant and, and because of my understanding of the special permit process. There, I think some of the rules that, um, apply based on this overlay district and the sequencing of those things. Um, it seems like we're trying to thread a, a, a pretty tight little needle there. I'm, I, so that I, I'm a little bit concerned with that. I understand the desire for the, the, the urgency and it sounds like Todd shares that. Um, so.
If I could just point out one thing that was in your report, which I, was a very long report, so you might have, might have missed it. The planning board is being asked to grant a modification that does two things. It stretches the use of a veterinary clinic to a veteran clinic and/or dentist office and/or hair salon. But then it also adds a condition that allows for an administrative change of use for Todd to submit if he has a different user that doesn't fit in those categories, but still fits within the categories that the select board approves. Then the town planner can review the proposed actual use and issue an administrative approval for a change of use that doesn't increase the parking demand and doesn't significantly change the traffic conditions. So the needle isn't quite as tight as it would otherwise be because we're asking the planning board to grant the modification with administrative change of use options, something that FMUOD applications, special permits do not ordinarily have. So we're, we are trying to build an even more flexibility, um, to allow it to go quickly. So if assuming the plan, assuming the select board grant a modification, the planning board do the same and the planning board includes that condition, Todd can continue to market his property and whatever user he comes back with, he can submit the application to our town planner for administrative um, change of use review, which can be issued in a matter of days. So there, there won't be a holdup on the town's end on this. It's just a question of marketing the property for a price that you have, find a willing buyer or tenant that will get in there. Um, that's, that's really what this comes down to.
Thank you. All set, Rob?
Yes.
Okay, how about Mary Ann? Um, we didn't get you an answer. I'm sorry.
Uh, well, I, I, I just wanted to raise that. I, I do understand the uncertainty of, of getting a tenant. I, I know there was one a- and apparently that, that fell through, but, um, but you know, I think it would be nice, uh, if we could get, uh, and, and I, I know Mr. Sullivan said it, it would be done within a month, uh, of getting the permit. Um, that, that's his aspiration and I, I applaud that. Um, I, I, I think it would be nice if, if, uh, we, we could have a deadline for getting that done after the appropriate permits are issued.
I, my only question, when you said done, I think you said started.
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed one.
That's it. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure how to address that, Mary Ann. Um, um, I, I have to be honest with you. I remember when this building came down High Street. It's from the dark ages when town council was a select board member and it's been a challenging situation ever since, which is why it paraded down High Street to its current location. I'm not sure, and I'm naive, but I don't call this ideal commercial property, but whenever I drive by, I just go, ugh, I, I, I'd like to see this cleaned up, squared away, uh, uh, sooner than later. Um, I'm thrilled to hear that Todd's, uh, well, I, I applaud him for his move on the wetlands because this is a zone two watershed uh, for Rockmano Brook. And I think, uh, uh, the Concom, uh, does a good job on keeping an eye on these types of properties and we have to protect those watersheds. So I'm not sure how to address your, your deadline issue. Um, but I'd sure like to get some, see some commercial, uh, establishment there and to get, see some tax dollars coming in, Mary Ann.
So you, Mr. Chair on point of order?
Yeah.
You, you folks can ask Mr. Sullivan to come back in six months and tell you where he is and where he's going and how things are going. Uh, you have, you have the ability to do that and I'm sure Mr. Sullivan will come back in and report out accordingly. And that, that's how select boards have handled some of these types of situations where they don't have the ability to lock in a timeframe like you're seeking, um, Mary Ann, but they, they don't want to give a complete free rein. So I, I would suggest that perhaps you, you set up a time some six months from now at the end of the calendar year where Mr. Sullivan can come back in and report where he is and where he's going and how things are going.
How does that sound, Mary Ann?
I think that would be great.
Thank you, Pat. Todd, you're amenable to, with that?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Was there something else, Pat?
No, that's enough.
Okay, that's a, that's a good point. Thanks, man. Uh, I, okay, let me open this up to the public. I see one thing in the Q and A. You know what, Tish? Got my shot last, let me.
Joe, it's not, it's not related to this.
Oh, okay.
It's related to the paving project.
I, all right, I won't try to. Tish, I'm sorry, you're still on the hook. Thanks, Rob. Um, okay, is there any other discussion thoughts on this? I'm inclined to, uh, uh, to go forward with, uh, and approve the modified proposal. So the silence is deafening. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the select board accept Todd Sullivan's modified proposal, acknowledge that the purchase price is less than the minimum required cost per square foot set forth in RFP Econ twenty-two R zero zero three and confirm the select board's authorization for Todd C. Sullivan Construction Company, LLC to proceed with the Obed Baker House project pursuant to RFP Econ twenty-two R zero zero three and as described in the modified proposal.
Um, I will second that motion and also thank Mr. Sullivan for the contribution to the aid to the elderly fund that was offered, um, particularly helpful in this year when we had, you know, the, uh, Pine Hill School kick into the tax roll. So thank you for that.
My pleasure, Rob.
Thanks, Rob. Um, all right, guess I'll do roll call vote. All in favor of the motion that Mary Ann read. I'm sorry. Back, sorry, I'm still back to Kirby Street. Roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all, board.
Take care, Todd. Good luck with that.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Get that tenant.
Joe, would you like to read the question now? That's in the Q and A or do you want to hold off?
No, I, I, I know a good hint when I hear one. Thank you, Tish. Yes, please.
Hi, Fran Frisco, Twenty Pine Lane. In regard to the street paving project, the summer Pine Lane has sunken granite bourbon near sewer drains along with many sidewalks sunken with large cracks. Will there be maintenance done on these before the street will be repaved?
I have no idea. Chris, can you help us with that?
We, we can certainly, um, follow up with DPW and get an answer, um, uh, for Miss Frisco as well as the board.
Thank you.
I don't have a answer specifically to that question right now. Um, although, Mr. Chair, I did hear from, um, our DPW in regards to the residents question earlier regarding the Denham Westwood Water District?
Yes.
So our DPW provides a five-year road improvement plan or summer paving plan, five years in advance. So that information was provided. Um, also just to, in this, this, there's certainly some opportunity for, uh, working with the town and Denham Westwood Water. So for example, uh, next summer's planned projects or proposed projects that the DPW has, those projects were, um, that list was provided back in twenty twenty-one. Um, and recently, uh, the DPW's heard, uh, received a request from Denham Westwood Water if they could hold off on a certain street because of a project, uh, that they're looking to do in twenty twenty-six. So information is provided five years in advance, um, of the scheduled, of the planned, um, work that the DPW is doing.
Thank you, Chris. That brings us up to our Canton Street, Canton Street project update, which, um, I put on the agenda, um, before we go too far with this, Mary Ann, um, sorry, I changed my screen and I'll leave it like that. Um, I want to apologize to you, uh, because I put this on the agenda because I had some serious concerns. I personally would have preferred sitting down with you over coffee and discussing it. And unfortunately, um, we can't do that because of the open meeting law. I did share that concern with someone from the charter review committee that I thought it was extremely challenging, not sitting down with someone, just asking them one-on-one for an update on this. So, so if this, I hope this didn't catch you, uh, blind, blindside you. I asked Todd to send you the information and, uh, I would have preferred that method. So that's, I just wanted to make that point. Um, I, my understanding, Mary Ann, is that you and Steve have an update, so, some new information for us. Is that correct?
I understand that you had concerns about the project and that's why we're discussing it.
Okay, okay. I thought you and, um,
I, I'd be happy to provide, uh, an update, um, if, uh, if I have the opportunity to do so.
Sure, you, you, you've got more up-to-date information than I do.
Um, well, I'm, thank you. I'll be happy to take that opportunity. I do see that, um, Steve Raffsky is on uh, my co-chair on the Canton Street Working Group. I see Michael Kraft is here from the Ped Bike Advisory Group. Um, so let me give, uh, an update, um, on this. As we all know, um, after the DOT hearing on what was the twenty-five percent plan on Canton Street back in September of twenty twenty-three, um, at that hearing, many residents, uh, expressed opposition to that twenty-five percent, uh, plan. And at the same time, many residents, uh, expressed an interest in having a sidewalk on Canton Street. Um, in October of twenty twenty-three, this select board voted to, uh, pursue an alternative design, um, for Canton Street based on, um, the state indicating um, a willingness to provide, uh, waivers, um, waivers which had not existed in the prior administration. Um, so this came to light after the twenty-five percent hearing. Uh, we voted as a board to pursue an alternative design uh, based on, uh, what we had heard from the state and importantly, to form a Canton Street Working Group so that we had a public, transparent and participatory group of residents working to inform that redesign. Um, we also voted, uh, to cap the amount of money to be spent, um, on that work, working toward the redesign at a hundred thousand dollars. Um, we asked for volunteers to serve on the working group. Uh, we received a number of, uh, letters indicating interest and we, as a board, selected that working group with six at-large members, uh, from the community in December of twenty twenty-three. The, I want to name them because they've all been extremely dedicated. Uh, Steve Raffsky, Grace Doshi, Ed Driscoll, Maureen White, Amy Gold Yale, Gary Yasalian. Um, we also have representation from the planning board, Ellen Larkin Rawlings and Ped Bike, Tom McShane. In addition, we appointed ex-officio members, Todd Corchen, uh, Bren- Brendan Ryan from DPW, Nora Lockne, Steve Lund, our fire chief, uh, and Steve Conley and Frank Baker from the Police Department. And Jonathan Rockwell from T E C has been our consultant. Um, I asked Steve Raffsky to co-chair this working group with me. Uh, all of you are familiar with Steve and you know that he is not only a longtime resident on Canton Street, uh, but also a longtime, uh, public servant, having served both on the Finance and Warrant Commission and for many years on the planning board, including as chair. And I thought it was very important. And I thought it was very important that a Canton Street resident be involved as a co-chair, not just as a co-chair, but also to facilitate the meetings so that this would be a true neighborhood discussion. And as I told the group, my focus has been primarily to listen. Um, this working group first met in January. After the holidays, we've met four times as, uh, a working group. And in addition, Steve formed a smaller working group, which has had public, transparent meetings, um, so that people could really roll up their sleeves, um, and do some of the very detailed work, which is difficult to do in a larger group, uh, involving looking at huge blowups, uh, of, uh, sections of the street and looking house by house on the street. At the outset, and continuing on, Steve and I have tried to focus on safety, on access and on the character of the street, which of course is a scenic way. The safety concerns, um, are as to all modes of transportation on Canton Street, motorists, pedestrians and cyclists. And we have heard many, many concerns expressed regarding safety and access on Canton Street. So we are, have been working toward, uh, the, providing the input um, so that we can get the revised plan, which the select board asked for. Um, and we have focused on safety by proposing narrowing the roadway, by adding, um, curbing, by adding raised crosswalks and by looking at a shared use path, uh, which would provide access for all residents from Islington all the way to University, um, out. Um, we chose, the working group chose not to look at the street monolithically, but rather in sections. We identified distinct sections from East Street Rotary to Downey, from Downey to Adams, from Adams to Hedgerow, from Hedgerow to Oceana and from Oceana to University. Our plan thus far, um, that we've been working on proposes a sidewalk on the west street of Canton Street from the Rotary to Downey and then to provide a path on the east side from Downey down to University. While the original 25% plan would have included takings, the currently envisioned plan that we've been talking about has shrunk the project significantly such that it is anticipated that no takings would be necessary, that the work would all be done within the county right-of-way. We looked at the difference between an eight-foot path and a possible five-foot sidewalk. And what we learned is that the difference there would be an impact from the 80 houses on the street, there would be an impact to 12 properties on the street. That would be the difference. Um, we are, uh, working, uh, in earnest on providing this input with a view toward getting a 10% plan done within the budget allotted to bring to the select board. Um, so we are on budget in terms of that work. Um, and then the idea is if this board, uh, would vote at that point to go forward with the full 25% plan, with a 25% plan, we would have a much better uh, sense as to what the full design costs would be, uh, what would be included in that. Um, we believe that most likely the mitigation that would be needed as to stone walls and as to trees would be included, um, within that. Uh, but that all needs to happen, uh, sequentially. Um, I want to thank all of the members of the working group and particularly Steve Rapsky for their very committed service to this process. Uh, we need to continue the work that the select board has asked us to do. Um, we expect that we are close to gaining consensus on, um, a 10% plan. Um, that can be brought back to the select board for further consideration. We have made a tremendous amount of progress and, uh, look forward to continuing with that work. And I would like to recognize Steve and, uh, I'm sure he has, uh, some more to add to that update. So thank you, Steve, for being here. And you're on mute.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for that. And Mary Ann, you gave such a comprehensive review. I will try not to be too repetitive, but I think you covered it very well. I, I want to reiterate that when I was, uh, asked to get involved and even step back, when I learned about the project, I was also one who said the project just didn't feel right and we should do a better job. Um, when I was asked to take on the role on taking, I did it with the understanding that first, this is a safety project. Second, it's a traffic calming project. Equally, as Mary Ann said, it's to maintain the quality of our neighborhood and to provide both vehicular and safe, non-vehicular transportation. I think also, um, as whenever you're involved with a big project, I'm very appreciative of the number of people who have gotten to know in the last three months or four months. And I truly believe people are calling because they want to share what they think and they are, for most part, are open to hearing what the process is. As Mary Ann said, we've had several meetings. Our purpose in forming the small meeting group was very simple. We realized as a big group, we couldn't be engineers. And our mission was to give guidance to the engineers so we could come back with a product that had more review. The next step of, of our mission is to do things, as Mary Ann more pointed out, there are the majority of the project has, has shrunken, if that's the proper word. It is 100% within the right-of-way. So there are no takings anymore. And although there are impacts along the whole street, because we're talking about changes along the street and changes tough, there are a handful of properties that have more impact than others. Mary Ann and I plan to be meeting with those property owners to look at options. And we've asked Jonathan Rockwell to take a stronger look at those to see how we can further mitigate impacts to individual properties in certain stretches of the street. I think I'll stop there, uh, but I do think our mission is to, in one or two more meetings, to see if we have enough of a consensus to come back to the select board to report where we are and get direction from you.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Mary Ann. Tish, I'd like to share my screen. Is that possible?
Yes, it is. You can share your screen.
Easy for you to say. Maybe not. Can folks see that?
Joe, can I? Joe, I can see it. Can I just ask you, uh, what this is supposed to represent, this slide?
So what I did, Mary Ann, is I tried to sort out what we know and what we don't know. And I tried to organize it in a fashion to help me better understand as we go down this road, what lies ahead.
I just want to be clear that, if I may, that there are some inaccuracies here. So I just wanted to be clear that this is not a select board document that you're.
Yep, yep.
This is something that, that you wrote.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. If you see something wrong, that's why I shared it with Steve. I shared it with Mike. That's why I asked, uh, Chris to give it to you and to Rob as well. So if you see something that's wrong, then please, I'm, I'm I'm just trying to get a handle on this and to better understand it. My concerns, Mary Ann, are strictly, uh, financial in nature. I'm only concerned about the money. If people are for the sidewalk, that's fine. If people are opposed to the sidewalk, that's fine. What I'm concerned about is the fact that we have a half a million dollars left and I want to make sure, uh, we spend that money wisely. I also attended the meeting on 5/29, uh, at the library and I know, uh, some, I saw it as still rather polarized. I saw, um, I did not think there was consensus building, but people that I respect, uh, watched it or were there and they feel that there was consensus building. I didn't think so. But I also saw, I also saw a woman there who was booed. I think she was from Canton Terrace. And she got up and spoke and, 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 and she was booed and heckled and I was just, I was just dumbstruck by that. I said, this, this is not going the way it's supposed to be going. Um, and whoever that woman is, I apologize. I'm sorry. I've never seen that, uh, a, a public hearing in Westwood here before. Uh, but I will say, I think you handled it marvellously. So kudos to you. So the next day I called Town Hall and I asked for an update on, on the financials for this project. And I was told, and if this number's wrong, Mary Ann, please correct me. But I was told there's approximately $441,000 remaining in the group, in, in the account. Is that the error that you're seeing?
No, I, I, I think that is, uh, that's the approximate amount that we have.
Okay, okay, okay. Good. So I was, me, I was surprised that we'd gone through half of the funds. Now, I'd see naively, maybe I thought when we appropriated the $900,000, uh, for Article 12, that was for, to determine, um, for the design costs services related to the Canton Street sidewalk. I didn't realize it would be more comebacks to town meeting. I thought that was, that was it when I voted for that sidewalk, uh, thing on May, at the May 22 town meeting.
Joe, can I interject there?
Yep, yep.
I think it's, it's very germane to what you're saying.
Please, anytime, Mary Ann.
I, I, I think you were right in thinking that. And that is what we, as a town, anticipated. The issue here is that we've changed course. We had a 25% plan.
Yep.
And we, as a town, um, ha- have expressed opposition to that. And we said, we want to look at a redesign based on the waivers uh, that the state indicated it was amenable to well after, um, we started on the process of the original, uh, 25% plan. So had we continued with that original plan, we probably could have gotten it done, the whole design with the 900. But we decided as a community to change course. Um, so that, that's important. Um, moreover, um, we expect that we should be able to get to a 25%. If, if, uh, the select board, if we want to continue going forward, we expect that we should be able to get to a new 25% plan within the amount allotted previously by town meeting. Um, the estimated cost that you have there to go from 25% to 100%, we're, we're not sure where you got that figure, Joe. Um, at this point, we don't know. We understand that it could be significantly less than the number that you have there. Um, moreover, uh, the estimated co- uh, construction easements figure you've placed there, I don't know where you got that figure, Joe.
Okay, but, but.
But we under, we understand, uh, from talking to our, uh, consultant, the town's consultant, that that, um, easement figure should be, uh, you know, vastly less than what you have listed there.
Okay, so let me, why don't you let me finish? And I'll tell you where these numbers came from, because I didn't make them up, Mary Ann. I didn't do that. I would never do that.
Oh, I, I wouldn't expect you to.
Yeah, so.
Just for clarity, Joe, the, the circled number?
Yep.
Um, I believe if we've spent 441, we should have 459 left in the account?
Uh, no, uh, what I was told is we've, um,
I'm just doing math.
Yep, yep, gotcha. Yep, okay. Anyways, I'm going to say half the money's been spent and half the money's left. Are you okay with that, Rob?
I'm good with that.
Good. So once I learned that we had spent half the funds and we weren't at the 25% design phase, I, Mary, I became very, very concerned. The next day I went and took a look at the, downloaded the grant applications for the tips and the, uh, and the complete streets. And it's exactly as Todd has said all along, that we have to have, this is a bimodal project. You have to have transportation for cyclists, bicycles and for pedestrians. So I called Chris Coleman and, Chris, I can't remember if I called you that Friday or if I called you that Monday, said I was pretty concerned about this. Uh, we need to discuss this, Mary Ann. Like I said in the beginning, I would have preferred to have sat down over a cup of coffee, but that, that's not on the table. So Chris suggested, why don't we sit down with Steve and Todd and see if we can do this? So we met on June 5th and, uh, uh, at, at, at the, uh, at Kirby Street, we met with Todd, uh, Brendan, myself, Steve Rapsky, uh, and Chris to discuss this. And Chris, uh, at any point, if I embellish these numbers, if I get these numbers wrong, my hearing's not that good. But if you think I'm embellishing the numbers, then please, please correct me, because my hearing, as Pat pointed out, isn't what it used to be. So we sat down at that meeting. I'm already pretty nervous about the fact we spent half the funds. And, and, and seriously, the, the meeting in my mind went from bad to worse. It was like peeling an onion back. Each layer went back. It got uglier and uglier. The first thing I did was I apologized to Todd. I apologized to Todd tonight because he's been the punching bag for this and it's not his fault. This could have been handled better and it should have been handled better from the get-go. So Todd is not the villain in this case. And, and I'm sorry, Todd, that you've had to take that kind of hit. Todd went on and explained, and he's told us, and Chris, you correct me if I'm wrong, he said that he discussed it with the tech engineers and he believed that with the remaining funds, half the funds, we could go from the point that we're at now to a 25% design drawing. I said, wow, so we're going to go through the whole 900 grand and end up with just the 25% design drawing. Uh, that, that really took me by surprise. And then Todd went on to say, Todd went on to say, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but he said it would be, cost approximately 500,000 to a million dollars to get to 100% design drawing. And Rob, all I did there, I just picked the midpoints. I didn't want to embellish this or anything, but those are the numbers. Steve heard them. I heard them. Uh, I believe I heard them correctly. So it's going to cost us another, I'm going to say $750,000 to get to, I don't know who you're talking to, Mary Ann, but I know I spoke with Todd and met with the others. And then Todd went on to tell us that, um, the town would have to bear, the town would have to bear the construction easements. And same thing again, he gave that same range of 500,000 to a, a, a million dollars on that. And again, Mary Ann, I just took the midpoint. Now, in all fairness, I ran some of these numbers by another engineer that I knew from my Concom days. And the one, and when he looked at the easements, this is what he said to me. He said, you better sharpen your pencils because property values aren't going down. So that's where the numbers came from. I didn't, I didn't pull them out of thin air and I didn't use a Ouija board. Um, I informed the group at that Kirby Street meeting that I don't believe the, uh, select board has any interest in bringing, uh, any of this to the May 25 town meeting. Our focus, and Mary Ann, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our focus has to be on the Westwood Fire Station and that we need to get a new fire station built. I told them, I think the warrant should be short, sweet, concise and completely understandable. And I didn't want to gum it up with any other huge capital requests. So why am I so focused on the half a million dollars that's left? Personally, I think we should freeze it. I think it'd be unreasonable to spend it. Uh, and, and the reason why is this. And here are my reasons for this, Mary Ann. Let's call that remaining half a million dollars domino number one. Let's say we spent, we've already spent half the funds, but we spend the. Let's say we spent, we've already spent half the funds, but we spend the rest to get the twenty-five percent design. In my mind, that's a huge variance. But let's say we go ahead and we spend that money and we get to the twenty-five percent design. After that, we're going to have to go back to town meeting uh because we'll be out of money. And I'm not sure when. So. Why do I say this? Because someone is going to have to stand up at town meeting in May twenty-six or May twenty-seven and advocate to spend another. Again, these are the numbers that I was given, seven hundred fifty thousand to a million dollars. That's domino number two. The first ones, the half million dollars that we have right now that we can spend. Do- second domino is asking for the funds to go to a hundred percent. Um, whoever does that, God bless them, because they better inform the taxpayers that night at town meeting. Full disclosure, because we're also going to have to spend money on the conservation easements, which we were not told at the earlier uh town meeting uh warrant. Hopefully, in May twenty-five, we'll be successful in funding the high school fire station that currently looks like a twenty-five pound gunny sack full of fifty pounds of potatoes. It's got some serious structural issues. I'm personally afraid the station may, well, whatever. It's, the fire station is a need. It's not a want. And there are only so many peas in the pod for the taxpayers. I don't want to see this half million dollars. Go down the drain to come to a twenty-five percent design drawing. This is what Todd had told us, Mary Ann. To get to a twenty-five percent design drawing and then simply sit on his desk and collect dust. Because I don't think the the taxpayers have an appetite for pony up any more money on this. But so now, tha- that being said, Mary Ann, I did this for my benefit. Now let's move to the right-hand side of the chat. The stone walls, as you said, there's thirty-five to forty little stone walls. That will be impacted. We have no idea who's going to, you you're assuming they'll be covered, but we really don't know. The committee doesn't know. Who's going to pay to remove those and rebuild them. Same thing for the trees. We don't know who's gonna remove the trees, pay for the tree removal, or who's gonna pay to have them replanted. And in addition to this, we know in FY twenty-six. Maybe sooner, the municipal school infrastructure report will be coming out. And Rob, I know you're involved with this, but we know. Um, there there will be some issues on both sides of the ledger of infrastructure that needs to be repaired. Um, and and as I, Mary, I just felt as though every time I turned around, it it didn't look good to me. I think we have a couple of numbers, a couple of options in front of us. I'm not sure we, I personally not sure I want to spend this half million dollars to get to the twenty-five percent design. Um. Because I don't think we're gonna be able to be successful with that. Um, there are lots of things this town can do with that half a million dollars. We can reduce the cost of the fire station. We can. Put a sidewalk where people want a sidewalk and I can, and and I can tell when Chris is moving around, he's. Not happy with what I'm saying, but I'll tell you and but it's not as easy as I'm saying. I know there'll be some procedural issues. I know there will be some legal issues. We'll have to handle some of this at town meeting. But it's been done before. We did the same thing with the fire truck. I just don't want to see us spend a half a million dollars. Down the drain to end up with a report on Todd's desk. Lastly, I think tonight we can send a message to all those naysayers, to all, to that contingency at town meeting. That said, uh, they don't want to spend a single dime on anything. We can tell them right now. That we heard you loud and clear and that this select board, which I think is an excellent select board, is prepared to step at any time. And stop a project to make sure we're meeting our financial targets and meeting any other targets. Uh, that we aren't afraid to say, stop, let's step back, take a deep breath and see where we go from there. So. That's where I was coming from. That's where I got my information. And I I sincerely believe, I. I just think if we spend the rest of this money, we're not gonna be successful of what lies down the road. Rob, you, maybe you looked at this with a long-range plan. You probably saw it coming. I didn't see it coming. I had no idea we'd have to pony up more money. I don't think the tax- at town meeting did you.
So I guess a couple of things. First, we as a select board voted unanimously. To create this committee. We asked them to do a job. I would respectfully disagree with a little bit with Steve on the what the the sort of guideposts were for me. The seventeen people that had this, you know, talked to uh who wanted to serve on this committee. I said there are really three guideposts to what I hope this group can do. The first is improve safety, right? We have increased traffic, I believe. Well, we'll see when we have the traffic study. Um, and we have want to minimize the impact to residences. And we want to minimize the impact to taxpayers. I don't know of another place where we could get this type of return on our investment. If we go through the process that we've asked this group to do. And they've done an excellent job. I've watched all of the meetings and I do believe that at the last meeting, they were getting much closer to consensus. I thought there was some real tremendous work done to adhere to those three guideposts. So I don't, I think it's premature to pull the rug out from under them. Um, and so. I would want to hear and see what that plan looks like, because the reality is. At some point. There will be a request for a sidewalk. And we know that that's gonna cost. Somewhere in the vicinity of fifteen million dollars plus. And if the state is willing to pick up that tab and do so to help maintain the scenic nature of the road by not having it be required to be on both sides. I want to explore what the art of the possible is. As this group has done with T E C to say, how do we mitigate the impact to properties? And it sounds like everything has been done to try and do that. So. You know, if you, if you think about the four forty. Well, yes, we have spent half of it. And as Mary Ann highlighted earlier, we as a community. Asked to go back and revisit because we wanted to get something. The group that spoke in opposition, spoke in opposition to the plan as presented. I heard a number of people say, I'm opposed to the plan as it is presented in its current form, but I'm open to. Some form of a sidewalk. And so now we are moving down the path. Of a redesign, and I think we owe it to these volunteers. Who have stepped up to work through this group that Mr. Rasky and and Mary Ann have been co-chairing. And we owe it to them to hear. What they have been able to come up with that may um be able to. Deliver a product that is acceptable to all.
We must be looking at different emails, but thank you, Rob.
If I could add, Joe, a few points, I may. I I want to underscore what Rob just said, which is number one. We made a commitment as a board. That we would look at a redesign. Uh, we made a commitment as a board that we would seek. The oper- the input from the community regarding that redesign before it was done. And we committed to the community that we would form a working group so that we would have a public process to do just that. And that is what we did. And I can tell you um that the members of this working group have been uh working hard. Uh, Steve Rasky has been working very hard. He has taken phone calls from dozens. Um, and dozens of his fellow neighbors on this. And I believe we need to respect the commitments that we've made to our community. And follow through on what we said we would do. Moreover. The nine hundred thousand dollars for design funds has already been allocated by town meeting. Um, that would get us to a twenty-five percent plan and then. With re- and with respect to the slide that you wrote, Joe, I just want to be careful and very clear to our residents. Because we have a duty to provide them with accurate information, as accurate as we can. And the issue I have with your numbers is that uh the estimated. What you have written there as an estimated cost to go from twenty-five percent to a hundred percent design is a guesstimate. With a G at best, a guesstimate. It is not an estimated cost. Also, the, what you have there as an estimated number to construct easements. Is a guesstimate. It is not an estimate. I want to be clear about that as a select board member. That I am not presenting that as an estimate. I think that would be unfair. Also, with respect to what we don't know, a- and you are correct. That at this moment, we we don't know uh about um the um mitigation for stone walls. And and trees. However, we do expect to know. With the twenty-five percent plan and the information that we have is that most likely as a scenic way. The um, the feds and the state will pay for mitigation as to. The stone walls and the trees. And this is something that we've paid a great deal of attention to. Um, and as Steve mentioned, we are trying to reach uh the neighbors that are most impacted. So that we can go out and meet with all of them individually. But um I I will just reiterate that I believe this is about the commitment that we as a board have made. And following through on our word.
I could not disagree more. Uh, Mary Ann, I know these are not hard and fast numbers. I took them from a professional source. And you're correct, they are not hard estimates. Um, you're correct. Um. And I started this discussion. I'm not, I don't, I'm not, I didn't want this to be a discussion about the merits. Of the sidewalk. I'm a hundred percent for sidewalks. What I'm more concerned about is financially where we're going. Because I didn't know when I voted that May twenty-two town meeting, that we would be asked to spend additional money above and beyond that. That was not made clear to me. And all I'm saying tonight is, we've got some infrastructure issues coming down the road. There's only so many peas in the pod. Um, I think we have to tread carefully when we go down this road. Uh, I'd like to take this time to uh, before we open it up. Thank you, Rob, Mary Ann. Those those are good points. I'm not trying to pull the rug out from anybody. I'm just stepping back and saying, look, we should reassess where we're going here. I I'd like to hear from uh Mike Craft.
But before you go to Mr. Craft.
Yes.
Um, you know, if we were at four fifty roughly, let's just call it four fifty to make the math easy fifty-fifty here, right? We were there when you you voted to allocate another hundred thousand dollars. And and you also voted uh to form this committee. So those things, if you were this concerned about it. I would have thought would have come up earlier.
Well, I'm I'm glad this is being taped, Rob, because if I had known this, I've had gotten those estimates before we agreed to. Spend the other hundred thousand dollars, if I had any of this. I had no idea about the easements. I had no idea about the additional funds to go from twenty-five percent to a hundred percent. That's why I voted. I'm telling you right now, if I had known this then, I would not have done it. I wouldn't have. I always said, stop, we we can't.
If you had known this in what, October, when we voted that to create the group? By December, December, just a few months ago?
Yeah. I I didn't know it till this week, last week. If I had known, and that's why I want to share this with you, to make sure we know the road that we're going down. We can, we can debate that till the cows come home.
If we were at four fifty to get to the twenty-five percent originally, and we were re- revising that twenty-five percent. We were going back to the drawing board. It would stand to reason that we were going to spend a reasonable proximity of that four fifty to get back to a twenty-five percent on the redesign.
No argument, but do you think the taxpayers have have an appetite for that?
Do I think the taxpayers have an appetite for that?
To spend additional money.
If I could, if I could spend it, if we are at some point, because you just said you're all for sidewalks.
Yep.
If we are at some point to improve safety on what is a fairly busy road. Wanting to put sidewalks, to spend an additional, let's 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 give it your additional one point six just for argument's sake. And we're in for, let's call it for rounding, you know, if you go from the one-six additional that you say there. And the million that we've already put in, so we'll call it three million to be, you know. And you could get fifteen back. I'd love to know another place where I could get a five hundred percent return on my dollar. And if it's about money for you right now, that is is, because at some point. There there will be e- either a tragic situation or, you know, people wanting a sidewalk there. And if that's the case, and it has to be all on the taxpayers' dime, then you're looking at, you know, a a fifteen million dollar effort. Versus what we're doing to get the design that the state would fund.
So I'm just. I I hear you loud and clear, Rob. Um, I'm just telling you, I hope we're going down the right road. You think we are. I have reservations. Why don't we leave it at that?
And and Joe, if I could just interject regarding, you know, a- a- as you well recall. Um, people have been talking about a sidewalk for Canton Street for, I believe, at least forty years. And I'd actually like to just give Steve an opportunity. We, a lot has been said. He is my co-chair on this working group. He has committed an extraordinary amount of time to our work and Steve, I I'd love to just give you an opportunity to respond and. Um, to add anything to the discussion.
Um, well, first of all, I I appreciate the discussion very much and I appreciate that everyone's trying to do the right thing. Um, I would like to chime in on the numbers for just a minute because I did a little research today myself. And let's start with the easements, just so you understand. We now are a hundred percent in the right of way. And the type of easement we need instead of a construction easement is a temporary easement. And it's my understanding, again, these are not firm numbers because we don't have a plan. But what is typical in the Commonwealth and in the area is approximately two thousand dollars of property for that type of easement. It's a type of easement the DOT might require, and it lasts for four or five years. And it's a fairly de minimis one as compared to a normal construction easement where you're doing takings. So I just want you to understand that's what I learned on that. Uh, with regard to the first seven fifty, I was in that meeting with you and yes, I think the correct thing to acknowledge. Is that that was an estimate that was based on a percent of project. Uh, at this point in the project, I would put pressure on our architects. To come up with a real number and agree on a number because we're too far into it. Now we can come up with a number that's less. So I uh, and I do want to reaffirm what Mary Ann said. I learned today also. That because of the scenic way and all, the probab- evidently mass DOT has already given an indication. That historic walls and trees would probably be covered by the feds. So I, your point, Joe, is you have a concern about money. That's your job. And the project that's a board, a select board decision, come back to the community and town meeting. But I do think the numbers, there's real money to be spent. I don't know if it's four hundred thousand or six hundred thousand. I don't think if we uh were talking about another million or two million dollars. Um, so. Um, I I, and if I could, I just wanted to make one other comment. I didn't want to imply that I thought we're at a consensus. And if I came across that way, I don't think. I, in all candor, we have a lot of people who speak after meetings because they have a. Uh, you mentioned someone was booed and what have you. I hear time and time again that people aren't comfortable speaking in favor publicly. That being said, I do believe we can get our committee to be, uh, our goal is to have a a fairly strong majority. Who believe we've got something to bring back to you at a reasonable cost. And I'll stop there. I don't know, Mary Ann, what you were expecting, but that's what came to my.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, other than my bogus math, are there any of those numbers that I misunderstand any of the numbers that we were told that morning?
No, I think they were estimates by, based on two things. One, a percent of the project, which is not what you would do at this point, I've learned. And then also full construction easements, which we no longer have. Uh, the other plan required full construction easements. Uh, we're now totally within the right of way. This is a temporary. Uh, ri- uh, right of way for for construction within the right of way. We might have to move a pole temporarily. Over, then move it back or or move a wall temporarily or 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 do something on a retaining wall. So yes, what we heard at a meeting, which was just frankly, a good guess, uh, well-intended. So yes, what we heard at a meeting, which was just frankly, a good guess, uh, well intended. Uh, I think we have a little different information building right now.
Thank you, Steve. Mary Ann, Rob, can I move on to uh, Mike Craft? Are you guys good?
Yes.
Okay, Michael, you still here?
I'm still here, Joe, thank you very much, appreciate.
Does it make sense to uh, take this off the screen and, and have?
Absolutely, I don't want to advertise my bum math, thank you.
Give you a chance to do that. Great. So, thank you, thank you, just a few um, initial remarks on my part, and then I'd be glad to take any questions, um. If I could just get my computer to work a little bit better, um. As, as you all know, but for those who are listening and that may not be aware, the pedestrian and bicycle advisory board. Is a committed task with the purpose of promoting pedestrian and bicycle accommodations and safety throughout the town. And that is consistent with the town's adoption of the Complete Streets program. And it's also one of the important components of the comprehensive plan, which is to work towards sustainability, among other uh, very important goals. Uh, pedestrian bicycle access and accommodation promotes health, community, and sustainability, and from what I've heard. Pedestrian and bicycle accommodation on busy streets can also increase property values. Um, Canton Street corridor, as has been mentioned already tonight, has been a long source of challenges. Uh, roadway is narrow, it has little margin for those who want to walk or run. Especially those with young children and dog walkers. It's a cut-through street, and um, I know you haven't done your official traffic study. Uh, but Steve Conley has shared with me the numbers uh, that he's picked up off of the uh, the speed signs. And uh, I took a quick look at some of those before this meeting. Uh, there's upwards of ten thousand vehicles a day using the street. And of tho- of that number, uh. There are some five hundred approximately that travel at a high speed, meaning five to fifteen miles an hour above the speed limit. And while that may be a small percentage, it's a large number of cars. And the last thing you want is to be the person who happens to be on the street when one of those cars is going through. So creating pedestrian and bicycle accommodation on Canton Street is viewed by our committee as a very high priority. Uh, it will allow the residents to walk or bike to school. Or the shopping center at University Ave. To enjoy more time with neighbors and create another link in the desired connectivity through our town. Uh, I was very encouraged with the meeting that was most recently held, the most recent revisions that I heard about from by the working group. Uh, it seemed to be, they worked very hard to examine every property on the street and find ways to adjust the roadway. And the path to reduce impact. And more importantly, retain the spirit of what's required by the state to receive these millions of dollars that will improve this, including the infrastructure, which. Is something I'm not sure has been completely discussed tonight, but there's, there are infrastructure improvements that are critical to that street. That we will be paying for at one way or the other. Um, two examples for me that seem particularly positive, we're shifting the roadway side to side in places that. Will reduce impact to uh, the neighboring property. And I thought best of all, the creation of nearly a dozen raised crosswalk tables as a means to slow traffic, I would bet. That many of the people who currently use Canton Street as a cut-through would stop doing that if they have to slow down. Some dozen times, driving down that street. Um, with all that said, it's not overlooked by our committee that any sidewalk or multi-use path will be disruptive and intrusive to the neighbors. And in particularly those with limited front yards. And I want to express publicly right now that we're very appreciative of those members who've come to our committee and discussed their concerns, and there have been. A, a, a good number of them, and some are there regularly, and we appreciate their being there. Finding a way to appease those concerns is a very high priority. Our committee is concerned that the timing of the meetings with the Canton Street Working Group is such that parents of families with young children are not. Easily able to attend those meetings. I will say, I've been looking through the questions, uh, the question and answer on this as we've been on this meeting today. And I'm, I'm happy to see that for all the people that I've heard speak negatively about the project, there are many on this. Q and A that are speaking positively, and I think, I hope that that's being captured. Um. Uh, so yes, a large number of people are speaking out publicly against, but I think that we have to make sure we are well aware, what is the overall consensus? Both in the Canton Street neighborhoods, as well as the entire town, the greater population of our town needs to be able to. Have a say on all of this, because we will all be affected financially if we're asked to pay for. Improvements which could have been addressed with a substantial input of funds from the state. So in, in conclusion, um. We, the head bike advisory board, are very happy that the committee see, that the working group seems to be doing very well at uh. Um, taking into consideration all viewpoints and, and. Uh, and, and seems to be reaching or getting closer to a consensus, not farther away. And I also want to add that the three of you members of the select board, you're faced with a thankless task, and I appreciate that very much. Uh, we know, or at least I do, that all of you have our best interests at heart, that you're working very hard to do the right thing. And our committee is happy to partner with the three of you in achieving those goals, so with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to. Take them or, or any other discussion points.
Thanks very much, Mike, and thanks for the great job you do chairing that committee, it's a great committee, thank, thank you for taking the time out this evening to join us and. Certainly appreciate your input. Uh, Rob or Mary Ann, anything else on that after Mike? Should we take, start taking the uh, public questions? Chris, can you, uh, Tish, can you help me with that?
Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drop for one second, sir, because I need to re, re, uh, start Zoom, I've lost, I've lost my screen.
Okay.
Be right back.
We'll be here.
Mr. Chair, I believe Chris Coleman has his hand raised, and also, there's a lot of questions. Residents need to put their full name and address, or else we can't read them into the record. There's quite a few.
Uh, I dropped the ball.
As I've been going through them.
Okay, thank you, Tish, Chris, did you want to uh? Way in on this?
Well, thank you, Tish, and thank you. Uh, yes, you, you asked me just to um, share with you. My thoughts on the meeting, if there was anything, and I think um, Steve has addressed that, and I think Mary Ann addressed that, so that. The amount that Todd provided was a guesstimate. From our consultant, based on what they knew at that time, uh, the project, uh, the, the redesign work. Um, was not, is not completed at that time, um, so that was just, that was just a guesstimate. If I misunderstood, I do apologize, Mr. Chair, but I thought. Um, when the conversation was being had, and um, like, I thought some, there was a comment made about a sidewalk could cost. Uh, five hundred thousand dollars, I don't believe, if I heard that correctly, I apologize, if I heard that incorrectly, I apologize. Um, but that would be, a sidewalk would be more than a half a million dollars. Um. And then I just wanted to also just, um, my third point, and Tish covered it, is just to remind those attendees who would like to communicate with the board. Um, just to put their names and addresses and type it into the chat, so thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Yeah, please type your name, yeah, okay. Rob, you're back, how's it working?
Good job, thank you.
Okay. Um, Tish, how are we looking with the questions?
Uh, one moment, I'm just trying to recap some of the addresses.
Thank you.
Okay. Here we go. All right, so I'll start. Um. Steve Olinoff, fifty-two Glamour Road. At some point, I would like to speak on this issue. Gary Assalian, nine Adams Street, this is quite lengthy, did you want me to read this into the record?
Please.
Okay, below was. Below is reply of the previous Canton Street Committee meeting, but was not included, please include it here, the subcommittee worked with T E C to see what sidewalk design would fit. Within the existing parameters of stone walls, minimal disruption to frontage, et cetera. What we determined is that it makes sense to keep the sidewalk treatment to one side of the street. The design concept being presented shows two proposals, an eight-foot path and a five-foot conventional sidewalk. Both designs impact frontage and stone walls, the eight-foot path impacts twelve more homes and the five-foot sidewalk. We need to see refinement in the following areas, number one. What width sidewalk would fit with no impact to anyone's frontage or stone walls? The walls were built in place most likely before the right of way was established, they are considered part of people's property even if they, even if in the right of way. Number two. We need to understand further why some walls are being impacted and others are not or barely. Case in point, adjacent to my property line Canton Street with either of the two concepts. I believe only one corner of the stone walls impacted. And thankfully, the canopy of trees will not be impacted, so it appears. I'd like to know if the right of way is not uniform, or the walls just vary in position. With respect to the road, can any shift in the road alleviate the walls' impact? Number three, approximately twenty-two homes will have their frontage severely impacted. Individual designs need to be developed, cost out and breached by the abiders, let alone change in a scenic road. Number four, trees to be impacted should be counted and tallied from the concept designs, one can determine pretty accurately the impact, this. Should be disposed to the public, five, the committee or subcommittee should assess if the hybrid design is feasible, there's no shared use path slash lane along the Dem Street. Interchange that was just completed, we should not be forced to incorporate this into our design, there is bicycle access, access on Blue Hill Drive to University Ave train station shopping. Number six, the warrant article of nine hundred thousand was for sidewalk study, as such, we need to complete the study. A shared use path of eight feet or ten feet was never proposed in the warrant article, the only reason. It is being considered is for funding, we should not let funding. Requirements impact what the residents are to what their position to them in. The warrant article. Seven, the current mitigation, traffic mitigation works according to NOR, the speeds are reduced since implement implements. We should not just rip them up because we think they don't, or because people are running into them, they are running into them because they are not paying attention, perhaps now they will drive slower. Let's not remove the islands, but move them if they facilitate the design of the sidewalk. Eight, Canton Street is ancient way, we need to understand what can and can't be done in ancient way. Sidewalk elevation need to be considered, the higher elevation will also impact stone walls, as they most likely to be. They will most likely be disrupted or destroyed during construction, must be reset and rebuilt to be on the same level as a sidewalk. This is in addition to the potential impact of frontage. Um, regards Gary Assalian.
This, this was a letter that you said?
I don't know, so there's quite a few. Um, Michael Lowny, two eighty-four Canton Street. Was Mary Ann referring to the alternative option number one or number two? She said sidewalk, what was she referring to the shared use path or sidewalk? Joe also in his presentation stated he was concerned about money. Prefaced it saying, and some people might be for sidewalk or against the sidewalk, so we refer into the alternative option number two. Than to my understanding as a sidewalk or as an alternative option number one, which is a shared use path. Do you want me to continue, do you want to take one by one?
Um. I can, you know, I'll, let me see if I can read this and give you a break. This is uh, a mall's iPhone, I don't see an address with this, so I shouldn't read that, right, Pat?
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, next is Ellen Rawlings, eighty-six Green Hill Road. Has the town received the results of the recent traffic study down Canton Street? Anybody answer that?
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Just a point of procedure here, if we're. Are we answering the questions as asked, because the, the Michael Lowny questions. Didn't get answered, so I know you're going on to a different question, I just want to make sure that we're treating each question the same.
All right, let's take a look at Michael's, um. Option one and option two, she said the sidewalk. But referring to the shared use path sidewalk. Joe also in his presentation stated he was concerned about the money. Prefaced it saying, some people may be for the sidewalk or against the sidewalk. So you're referring to the alternative option two, that to my understanding is a sidewalk. Or the alternative option number one, which is a shared use path. Uh, I guess what you're asking me, Rob, I'm in favor of a sidewalk, I have reservations about the shared use path, I have reservations about. An eight-foot strip across someone's front lawn. Is that sufficient?
I think that answers his question as to whether you were talking about number one or to number two, it sounds like you're talking about number two. And I believe he had a question as to which of the alternatives, uh, Mary Ann may have been referencing.
I don't follow that, Rob, I'm sorry.
The beginning of his question says, was Mary Ann referring to alternative option one or number two?
Mary Ann?
Uh, I think what I, I was referring to, and I think what Mike is asking about the. The um, plan that the working group has been looking at. Um, has uh, a shared use path and eight-foot shared use path. Um, a- again, this discussion is a bit premature, because we haven't yet reached consensus as a working group, we've been. Working uh, to get there, um, and uh, hope to report back on that uh, once we do. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Ellen Rawlings, I read hers. But we don't, that's, Rob, when you pointed out, I didn't answer Michael's questions, uh, so do we have an answer on this traffic study question? Chris?
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's still being worked on, I, I think one of the things that um. We're trying to schedule is a, a meeting with a consultant, um, as early as next week. So we hopefully will, if we have that, if we're able to meet with a consultant, um, hopefully we'll have some information for the board at the, at the earliest at your next meeting.
Okay, and Tish, the next one is Dave Atkins, did he type his address in down below?
He provided his address, yeah, seven eighty-three, seven eighty-three High Street.
Okay, let, let me give this a shot, at the beginning of this discussion, I believe, I heard Ms. LeBlanc Cummings say. That the select board had authorized spending an additional one hundred thousand to engage the modification pro- process. I assume that came from other sources than the nine hundred thousand, and I was. I was a limit on. And was a limit on modification process, then we would continue the process. And complete the design under the nine hundred thousand dollar budget, what changed? I'm having trouble understanding Dave's question. So, Mary Ann, the hundred thousand that we said to, to proceed came out of the nine hundred thousand, correct?
That, that is correct, Joe, and we had some discussion about that, that there was a discussion in the group that.
Yeah.
Folks wanted to limit it, but it was coming from that nine hundred thousand dollars, which had already been approved. By town meeting, I, I had raised at the time whether we, we needed to even authorize uh, the amount, because it had been approved, but, but yes.
Oh, I remember you asked very specifically, so no, okay, Dave, if I, if I misunderstood that, then please pop in again there. Uh. Tish, how about Sweetah Mapani?
She, eighty-six Canton Terrace.
Thanks. Oh, okay, additional money was spent because residents of the community who did not want the original sidewalk. Shared path on both sides of the project, wanted a sidewalk, shared path for safety. And that is why the additional money was spent on the design, thank you. Sweet, again, the nine hundred thousand was already approved at previous official meeting. And there are many residents who are in support of this project of one sidewalk slash shared path, thank you, Sweetah. Uh, Grace, Doshi, ten Adams. Mr. Chairman, since money seems to be the greatest concern to you, what is the cost of the resident's safety to you? It's number one. Um, how about Briz Braylin? Uh, okay, I see it, six twenty-eight Canton Street, I am in full support of this project and really appreciate the working group's efforts to make safety the number one. Concern as the, as a mom of toddler and the. User of the commuter rail, which I cycle to uh, our scooter, happy to speak to any concerns if there's time available. Kathy Wallace, two eighty-three Farn Lane, I am concerned about the money that has been spent to date on this project, why was this? Why was this done as a nine hundred thousand dollar borrowing at two thousand twenty-two town meeting? Rather than using free cash or other funding sources, we've been paying interest on this for two years, can someone? Who has the select, who, someone who was on the select board at that time. Or part of the warrant process speak to why this was done and borrowing? Or part of the warrant process speak to why this was done and borrowing. Chris, I'm gonna turn this over to you. If that's okay.
Yes, so at the time, this was presented to the select board as well as the Finance and War Commission as a borrowing article. Um, typically what happens with certain amounts. Um, depending on what that amount is or, or the project uses um, would determine um, the recommendation to the board and to the FinCon. And at that time, the recommendation was to borrow for the nine hundred thousand and not to use one-time funds.
Thank you, Chris. Um. Pat, I've got one here that says anonymous attendee and Tish did anonymous.
They did identify themselves later down in the chain. The name is Annie Hancock at one fourteen Partridge Drive. Pat, is that fine?
Let's go. That's fine.
Thanks, Tish. We support sidewalk on Canton Street. It's good for the motorist cyclists and the pedestrians. The number of each, if those road users. Has multiplied in the last five years. I have seen many times people walking their dogs, kids. And seniors on Canton Street and sometimes using dangerous areas like the center divider. Line and the, and the extreme ends of the roads. Uh. Kathy Wallace, Kathy Wallace, Kathy Wallace, two eighty-three Farm Lane. The town has received two hundred fifty thousand from. Top Golf towards Canton Street. How was that money spent? Uh, Chris, I'll turn to you on that. I, I wasn't aware of that. Is that correct?
I, I'd have to double check. Um, I, I do believe that there was some funds that were allocated um, through the then select board. Um, and that was used, I think, for some beginning, beginning work on Canton Street.
That is correct, Chris. There was two hundred fifty thousand dollars in mitigation money from uh, the, the Top Golf project that was used. That's, that began this project, yes.
Tish, uh, how about Kathleen Nieman?
I do not see an address for Kathleen Nieman.
Okay. Kathleen, if you can. Type the address in there. I'm happy to come back to it. Uh, then our anonymous person, yes, taxpayers have already, uh, well, I don't want to assume it's the same person. The anonymous attendee with, yes, pay taxpayers, we need your address.
Uh. Joe, I believe Pat was trying to weigh in on something there.
Oh, okay. I think your assumption is correct, Mister Chairman. You can't assume it's the same one. Uh, so you need a name and address.
Thanks, Pat.
Read into the record.
Uh. Sweeta, again, we have lived on Canton, if I'm repeating myself, Rob, stop me. Uh, I have trouble with the small print. We have lived on Canton Terrace for twenty-nine years and we have always asked for. And supported a sidewalk for safety for our community, our pets, our children, our families, anyone passing through our community. Anonymous again, Amy Yale, Amy twenty-two Hetro Lane. And there's a. Anonymous again. So Amy, let me see if I can catch up here. As a member of the small working group, I'd like an opportunity to share my position. Um. I'll come back to that. Laura. Yep.
I believe the um, above Amy Yale, the anonymous attendee.
Yeah.
Identified name and. Not number, but street address. At the end of the comment. The one I'm referring to, Mister. There um, says my name, the last sentence is, uh, uh, last two sentences. My name is Annie Hancock. I live on Partridge Drive.
I, okay, okay. So I can read that then. Okay, thank you. I fully support the project and I'm very disappointed by the. Fact that we have spent most of the time discussing a s- aside, a slide. That was not been fully vetted and appears to be inaccurate. I sent an email with my full support. There are children on this side of the very busy and waiting for the bus. Which is delayed because of the traffic is impacting their education. Someone will get hurt. It will also improve the community. Prove the community. My name is Annie Hancock. Okay, got you, Chris. I live on Partridge Drive. Thank you. Uh.
And then later, I believe, uh, um, she. Identified as one fourteen Partridge, Partridge Drive.
Okay, good, thanks. I would love to speak. And support and talk about this. Rachel. Tish, do you see an address there?
Rachel, Rachel does identify herself later on the chain. Rachel Dow, twenty-nine Hetro Lane.
Okay. I would like to show my support for the Canton Street sidewalk project. I live on Hetro Lane. With my husband and four children, I'm concerned that many of the residents. Who are in support of this project have young children or other obligation have not been attending meetings difficult. And have therefore uh, not been hurt. Uh, kudos back to you, Mike. I, I drive on Canton Street several times a day and I can confirm that people do continue to walk, bike, run Canton Street despite the safety concern. I do not follow my own children to work. I do not allow my own children to walk or bike or. On Canton Street, but I have been close. I have seen other children riding bikes on Canton Street for personal standpoint. Is a safety point first and then also connectivity for the community. Maureen White, five sixty-eight Canton Street. I have a copy of the warrant. Which is specifically states Canton Street sidewalk design. There are over six hundred signatures. Uh, there are over six hundred signatures opposed to the original plan, specifically the shared use path. Thank you, Maureen. Sweeta again from Canton Terrace. Uh, thank you for the working committee, Steve and the select board who've been. Doing such tremendous job this evening. I think Kathy Wallace has one more down here. Uh, Tish, Kathy Wallace is down at the bottom. I don't, I can't get to it.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Kathy Wallace is at the bottom of this list and I can't get to it. Kathy Wallace is seven.
Mister Chair, I believe I can, I can read that one.
I can read it too.
Two eighty-three Farm Lane. Everyone keeps talking about a sidewalk tonight, but my understanding is. That if we pursue a sidewalk only, it will always be on the taxpayers' dime. The state will only pay for a shared use path. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, Mary and Rob. If you guys see it differently, or Mary Ann, if you see it, Steve, see it differently, let me know.
Mister Chair, can I ask a question, please?
Sure.
So somebody in the thread, and I've heard this before, talked about the fact that there's bike access, I think on Blue Hill. Drive or uh, one of those neighboring roads. And you know, i- in the world of being creative, uh, and I'll present this to Mary Ann and to Steve as well. Um, I, I don't know to what extent the state might consider. The fact that there's an alternative bike path close by. In their consideration of the funding and whether or not we can. Get them to be a little bit more flexible and, and allow just a sidewalk to be built along Canton Street with the op- be- because of the opportunity of, of the. Uh, neighboring street. I thi- I think that's certainly worth consideration.
Thank you, Mike. I've used that. That's how I get to University Ave. Okay, um. And Rob and Mary, maybe my thing's frozen. Maybe that's it. Well.
Joe, if you'd like, I can help with some of the ones that I can see. I don't know that because I had to drop and log back on that I see them all, so uh, Tish, maybe keep me honest.
Mm-hmm, I will.
Okay.
Thanks, Rob.
Sure thing. Um, this is from uh, Amal Mapani of Seven Blue Hill. Um, and it's uh, says, hello, Joe, I'm one of the largest abutters impacted by the work at Seven Blue Hill. And I'm strongly in favor of the solution proposed by Steve and team. I believe we strongly require a walkway due to safety, state funding and requirements to help improve in- infrastructure. It would be short sighted to stop this project now, especially when only twelve homes are impacted. At least some of those folks are in favor of the work. Next is uh, Michael DeDarian. Hi, my name is Michael DeDarian, two eleven School Street. I prepared a few comments tonight, but my comments are well covered by select persons Cummings and Gotti tonight. I believe it is inevitable that this town will at some point connect its major commercial and social centers through sidewalks and paths. And that students in the Downey District will be able to safely walk their neighborhood streets. Let's finish this design and process and then consider next steps in a democratic manner. Potentially by putting the proposal that comes out of this process to a town boat. Thank you all for your public service. Uh, next is uh, Amanda Farren of two eighteen Weatherby Drive. How would the project help with excess traffic that is now on Canton Street due to the new exit on ninety-five? The morning traffic is all, is a lot of morning. A, a lot of mornings that's off the charts. Um. There's an anonymous attendee that would like to speak, but um, she keeps her Q and A, Q and A here anonymous. We, we would need to know your name and address before we could uh, entertain that. Um, next up is Jennifer Flanders, eight sixty-six Gay Street. I am in support of this project and want to comment on the utility aspects. I understand that if moved forward, this product, project would include. A new storm water system, water main replacement and relocated overhead utilities. The water main is reportedly past this expected life. And will need to be replaced either way, which costs millions of dollars. What is the impact on taxpayers if this project does not happen? It sounds like we will, we'll be having to pay a full price of utility updates if this project does not move forward. I think it should be more public what we are on the hook for regarding water main replacements and stormwater updates if this project does not move forward. Thank you. All right, next up is Marissa Toronto. There, there's a couple where I see Kate Cochrane of four oh six Canton Street, but I don't see an actual question. Um, next up, I see Marissa Toronto. Um, one seventy Canton Street. Please address the fact that the nine hundred thousand dollars residents were asked to vote for was quote a sidewalk study. The town spent money on a shared use path and sidewalk design. This is a completely different project. Uh, another comment from. Amol Mapani on Seven Blue Hill Drive. To clarify, we are in favor of the eight-foot shared use path. Kate Cochrane here, which here we have her question and just to refresh, four oh six Canton Street. Will stone wall replacement costs be determined prior to its fully decided to enact a plan? Uh, next is Dave Atkins. We had his address earlier. I don't have it handy to reread. Um, why would we need a hundred thousand more to complete the design? Because there was a whole lot of additional design work done. Um, Maria Constantine, fifteen Spellman Road. I think this project could have a positive impact on the lives of residents along and near Canton Street. I think it is premature to make the decision to abandon the project at this stage. The currently proposed design is promising, but we need to go beyond the conceptual design to really appreciate the project. What it would look like both for the five-foot and the eight-foot options. We should carry out the design task that the working group was set out to carry out. Next up, we have Nicole Nacera, five ninety-eight Canton Street. To note, I am currently pregnant with my first child. Congratulations. And have a dog that has been brought up a few times to say only. Those who have children and dogs who live on Canton Street are for this project. I appreciate the efforts of the working committee to try and make this project have minimal impact to the scenic nature of the environment. Um, as well as the impacts to homeowners. Once the project has been drafted twenty-five percent, will there be another public hearing? There's another anonymous attendee. Um, well, it looks like it's, that's now Gary Assalian, nine Adams Street. Was the two fifty from Top Golf part of the nine hundred K or can that be incremental to cover the additional design costs? Chris, we probably have to go back in the archive on that one. I know that we got two hundred fifty thousand dollars in mitigation money from Top Golf. I can't recall exactly what dollar for dollar that was spent on, but I do know we got that two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Okay, next up is Dave Atkins again. I support a sidewalk and finding a solution here. My concern is that if all the money is spent on redesign, then we will have to ask town meeting for another seven hundred fifty K. Or more with no guarantee that anything will ever be built or grants will be funded. I believe that likely will fail. Uh, and he is at seven eighty-three High Street. Beth Tulluja um, is on Bright Lane in Westwood, but I don't see a question. Oh, here it is down here. I really think the town should focus on the fire station. Um, back to Mike Lowny. Uh. He's, this was his question regarding to whether you and Mary Ann were talking about option one or two. Says, thank you, Joe. However, Mary Ann, could you clarify your answer? You had stated the sidewalk in your presentation, in particular when you mentioned impact on walls and houses. So were you referring to a sidewalk, not, not the shared use path? I think part of the confusion people have and frustration is when people speak about this project and use the word sidewalk when they actually mean shared use path. So can you clarify? Because in your presentation, you said sidewalk. Amy Yale would like to speak live. Um, she had that comment earlier. Maureen, which I believe is Maureen White, who we have uh, got her address earlier, right, Tish?
We did.
Very, very good. Maureen says Canton Street is a designated scenic way. Why are you dismissing the criteria for a scenic way to achieve the goal of obtaining DOT funding? Fran Fusco, twenty Pine Lane. Is there any way you can post a spreadsheet of this Canton Street project? It might better explain the dollars involved. Next, I have Chris Marks of ninety-nine Endicott Street. Would this project scope take into account the needed improvements related to infrastructure, plumbing, roadway, power lines underground or right around? Or right around Canton, Canton Street? Um, if not, would ultimately, if not, who would ultimately fund these improvements that is coming to the end of its useful light? Life, I fully support the sidewalk project on Canton. The traffic is considerably more now given the ninety-five exit and Top Golf. Thank you. Um, Amy Yale. Uh, Mister Chair, I have dedicated countless hours to the small working group. I would appreciate the opportunity to speak. Live for the two minutes I'm supposed to be allotted. Next up is Phil Jelso. Of one seventy Canton Street. How can the town even consider taking down hundreds of trees, bushes, shrubs and green space? With global warming emergency the world is facing, a sidewalk project of any size will decrease carbon offsets. Increase climate, decrease air quality, negatively disrupt the ecosystem. A simple drive down Canton Street will si- clearly show the incredible impact down the entire length of the street. This would be a very bad look for Westwood. The state and town funds would be better spent on other necessary projects just because you can have. Or have the quote right of way to do something doesn't, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. Back to Maureen White. Um, and she is at five sixty-eight Canton Street. Can you address why the emails you may have received? Can you address the emails you may have received over the last week? Kathleen Nieman of thirty-two Greenacre Road. Uh, I grew up on Mulled Circle off East Street. The ability to access Islington Center, Islington Train Station and Downey School by foot, bicycle really shaped my early teen years. I think a sidewalk. Slash biking on Canton Street would be really instrumental to people of all ages, but particularly to teenagers. Uh, Gary Assalian, clarification, water mains will be paid for by Dedham Westwood Water District. The town will be on the hook to pay for sewer updates and we need to get those costs. The state would not pay for water nor sewers. I understand water lines are due to replace in twenty, due to be replaced in twenty thirty-five. Had a full paving job and in implemented, they would have been replaced. Laura Morrison of thirty-nine Spellman Road. I have a five and eight-year-old who will both be attending Downey School next year. I'm in support of the revised plans for a shared use path. For all of the safety and connectivity reasons already mentioned here, I have a master's in civil and environmental engineering and a professional engineering license and have spent ten plus years of my career. On municipal infrastructure and product sustainability. Sustainability includes several aspects, economic, social, environmental. This project supports all three pillars. From an economics perspective. The project provides much-needed funds for infrastructure improvements that would otherwise need to be paid for by the Westwood community through taxes. From a social perspective, walk and bike access promotes a healthy lifestyle. While providing desperately needed safety updates to Canton Street in addition to improving our community's connectedness. And from an environmental perspective, reduction in car traffic and promotion. We're getting close. I got three more. Uh, Jared Strauss of four thirty-six Canton Street. Can we make Canton Street closed to through traffic at certain times of the day, seven AM to, seven to ten AM, four to seven PM? Not gonna answer that. I believe that's a, an issue with the county. Laura Morrison, thirty-nine Spellman Road. I'm sorry, my last point got cut off. From an environmental perspective, reduction in car traffic, promotion of walking, biking. Reducing our carbon footprint, some of the nap, back of the napkin calculations based on the length of the street and the estimated traffic per day. If the sidewalk reduces car traffic by just even one percent. It would save the equivalent of six hundred and sixty trees a year. A carbon equivalent of six hundred and sixty trees per year. And lastly. Sam Jelso, one seventy Canton Street. If a sidewalk is put in on Canton Street, will a sidewalk be put in on Clapper Tree Street? If a sidewalk is put in on Canton Street, will a sidewalk be put in on Clapper Tree Street, Gay Street, Dover Road and other streets in Westwood for the same reasons cited for the need on Canton Street? Please answer my question. The others posted here on this forum. I am against any sidewalk. I think that is all of the questions.
Outstanding work. Outstanding. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Pat, I have to come back to you for a second here. We discussed this a little bit this morning. Uh, I've got Amy Yale and Steve Olinoff asking to speak. I, when I discussed this with you this morning, I felt strongly that um, Mike Kraft is a, a, a chair of uh, one of the, the Ped Bike Committee in town. I wanted him to speak. Steve obviously being the co-chair. Um, am I opening up Pandora's box? Am I doing something wrong if I don't or do allow these two people?
It's at your discretion. You, you don't have to allow public participation on a thing, but if you start public participation, I think you should. Uh, Steve Olinoff is a longtime member of the planning board. Amy Yale has been a member of the small working group. I think you can justifiably give them a, a couple of minutes of our, of your time, considering how long this is stressed on. So I would advise you to uh, give them an opportunity to speak, but to keep it short.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate your input on that. Um, Tish, is Amy still available to see, still want to chat? And she has a two minute limit, which I, I will time.
I can bring out Brandon and Steve first.
Sure.
Steve is joining and Amy is so on.
Good. Steven, you're on.
This is the Glendore Road. Uh, so I just wanna try to answer questions rather than ask questions and make it clear, because a lot of times people and then I've been attending MPO meetings that meant to involve in planning organization for like thirty years and dealing with uh, Mass Dart without, for over thirty years. So I hopefully can answer some of these questions, but uh, people always ask, will we get this money? The answer is you already have this money. Then the project has been put on the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP. And it's on there for uh, twenty uh, twenty-eight. And it's for uh, twenty-two million, eight hundred and fifty-four uh, thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. And uh, I'm not sure. I asked how it got up so high. They apply uh, uh, inflation factors every year, but uh, and generally speaking, I estimate the ten percent for uh, design. So that's like two million dollars. So, so yes, it could definitely would, could cost more to finish the design, but that's the normal case. Uh, the, the, and the town doesn't get that money, by the way. Uh, the Mass Dart is the one that, that uh, advertises the project, chooses the construction uh, company and, and oversees the completion. Certainly, uh, you know, Todd and our town will be there making sure they do it right. Uh, but I just wanted to, to make that clear. Uh, number, now what's included in done, being done for that amount of money? Uh, it does not include the water main. Uh, it does include, uh, because that's, you know, that's repairing a utility, which is that that's not part of the project. That's never included any of these projects. Uh, but it does include anything on the road that's in the way of the project that has to be moved is, is paid for. That stone walls, trees, uh, trees that have to be removed and replaced. Now, in the past, uh, for, for planting new trees, uh, like in Washington Street and High Street, what happened was we've, we've asked for more trees than they were willing to give. And so the town did have to come up with a little extra money for those uh, additional trees. Uh, usually that, I think that's about the only prospect we have for any money that we'd have to pay beyond this. Uh, but uh, that twenty-two million, that's a lot. And that's uh, I think that that can provide for a lot of uh, uh, new trees. Uh, as far as putting the utilities on the ground, that's something that the town would have to do. Uh, and when it's done, it's paid for by additional money, amount of money that's put on everyone's electric bill in the whole town. It's been done several times before for, for parts of High Street, for Washington Street, parts of, and University Avenue. Uh, and uh, as that works very well in the town. So that's why I'm recommending.
Steve, 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 I'm gonna have to stop you there. I, I gave a scooch more than the two minutes.
That's okay. That's, I've said more than that. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Steve, for joining. Amy, thanks for your work on this uh, working group. Uh, we'd like to hear what you have to say. I'll, I've got two minutes for you as well.
Thank you. Uh, Amy Yale, twenty-two Hedroladen. I'm a mom of two young daughters and one of the resident members of the working group that was put together by the select board to come up with a new design for a Canton Street accommodation for pedestrians and cyclists. Our task was very clear. Come up with a design for safety, access and preservation of road character at the forefront of everything with the least disruption to Canton Street residents and to nature and to help with traffic calming. Mary Ann, Joe, Rob, this issue comes down to public safety and I urge you to prioritize it before someone gets hurt or worse. You nominated Steve Raski, who has led our group as a volunteer chair, spending countless of hours in discussion and refinement, who ensured that we followed the town's open meeting laws and democratic process. We were specifically asked countless times to set budget concerns aside to focus on creating that best possible design, which we would then present to the select board for their decision on whether or not to move forward. We are close, but we have not gotten there yet. You are gonna strip, uh, strip Steve and the task force of our duties because of budget, which is the exact issue we were told to set aside to begin with. And even looking, Joe, at those guesstimated numbers you've shared tonight, yes, we may be at fifty percent of the town's budget allotment, but help me understand how anyone in town can operate within a budget if it's revoked once they, once they reach fifty percent completion. Were we not supposed to follow those directives from Steve and Mary Ann? Tell me what example this sets for the future and what does this say about the democratic process? And how about?
Thank, thank you, Amy.
No, Jo- Joe, that was.
I'll, I'll give you thirty, thirty more seconds, but I, I can't. I'm sorry. I allowed you to speak.
Joe, oh, oh, I've just, I don't think that that's fair. I've spent countless hours dedicated to this. I would like another minute to, to say what I spent time putting together.
I'll give you one minute.
Okay, Joe, you're an avid runner and cyclist. Your campaign message in twenty twenty-three specifically calls out that pedestrian safety is a priority for you and how important safe walking areas are. Your campaign flyer on your Facebook page, quote, "I am a strong advocate for the safety and well-being of our children." Well, what about my children? Rob, Mary Ann, I urge you to vote against Joe's proposal and follow through with this project. It's what the majority of the town wants and will change Westwood for the better for generations to come. Or you know what? Take the ten percent plan that we have today and put it up to the town for a vote. People are waiting for this new plan to voice their opinion. Please do not let those squeaky wheels who never had an open mind to begin with, make a decision for the whole town just because they're the loudest. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Rob, Mary Ann, anything else before we uh, close this chapter? Well, thank you all for your uh, uh, taking the time to weigh in on this tonight. We appreciate uh, what you had to say. And we will move on to the next item on our agenda. And that is the select board, uh, no, I'm sorry, appointments, reappointments under all business.
Thank you, Joe and Rob and Mary Ann for uh, giving me the opportunity.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Good night, Steve. Appointments, reappointments, boards and committees. Let's see, select board to continue its annual process for appointments, reappointments to the boards and commissions. Um, Rob, you were pretty quick on this before, or Tish, do you want to take this? Actually, you were very quick on this before, Rob, if you would be so kind.
Happy to, Mr. Chair. All right. So we have a, a number of appointments and reappointments. Um, there are uh, the following that um, I'm gonna read the whole list and then we can uh, if there's anybody, I guess that we have a hold on or anything, any concern about, um, stop me as we go. So the aforementioned Canton Street Project Working Group. We have a, a start date of July first, twenty twenty-four with an end date of June thirtieth, twenty-five. A reappointment of the following. Mary Ann LeBlanc Cummings is the Select Board Representative. Ed Driscoll as member, Grace Doshi as member, Steve Raski as member, Ellen Larkin Rawlings as the Planning Board Representative, Maureen White as a member, Amy Gold Yale as member and Gary Assalian as member. Officer Frank Baker, ex officio, Steve Conley as ex officio, Todd Corchen as ex officio, Nora Lockname, ex officio, Chief Lund, she's Steve Lund as ex officio and Brendan Ryan as ex officio. Next, I have election officers.
Point of order. Point of order. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, I, I did um, have communication with Michael Kraft. Um, and uh, left off of this list is the Ped Bike Representative, um, Ted, Tom McShane. And he did, he did that he wanted to add him to the list.
Very.
I have a question for that though, Mary Ann. Tom McShane is his term on Ped Bike expires as of June thirtieth. He's not continuing on Ped Bike.
Right. Um, and Michael said he wanted to appoint him um, for continuity and that he would liaise with Ped Bike. So that's what the message I got.
I spoke with Tom McShane, McShane earlier today and he told me he wants to just give it a little more thought for like another day and then he'll get back. So we can, if we can hold off on that, that maybe till the July tenth.
Sure.
I'll get back. Thank you.
We can always add someone after this.
Right.
Like we're about to do for election officers, which has stepped up as a new member uh, of the election officer group and uh, that would be a term that runs July first of twenty-four through June thirtieth of twenty-five. The following members are up for reappointment for the Long Range Financial Planning Committee, which would be a term again, June fir-, July first, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-five. Julianne Bride, Nancy Hyde as the Board of Assessors member, Nancy James, Melissa McDonough, Paula McGlocklin, Maya Plotkin as the School Committee Member, Chris Coleman as ex officio, Molly Keen as ex officio, Patrick Arhearn as ex officio, Nora Lockname, ex officio, uh, Todd Corchen, ex officio, Stephanie McManus, ex officio, Jimmy McCarthy, ex officio, Lema Jean Baptiste, ex officio, Tim Pivvar as ex officio and Elijah Romulus, Romulus as ex officio. Next, we have three new appointees to the Off Leash Dog Work Park Working Group. Joanna French would be the School Committee Representative. This term starts uh, a little bit different on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four and runs through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we also would be uh, adding Todd Corchen as an ex officio member as lo- as well as Chief Jeff Silva, Police Chief Jeff Silva. Um, next we have the Rec Commission. Um, we are looking to reappoint Kate, Katie Collins. Um, her turn is a three-year term from July first, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-seven. And finally, on the zoning board, a reappointment, three-year term, same July first, twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-seven with uh, Linda Walsh.
So moved.
Any discussion on the motion? Roll call. Rob?
Hi.
Need a second, Joe?
Oh, I'm sorry. Rob?
Would you be so? I, I, yes, uh, sure.
I understand completely, man.
I, I second that motion.
I appreciate what you said.
Sorry.
Yeah. No, no, thanks, Pat. Keeping us honest here. Uh, roll call, Rob? Hi.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right. Liaison, ne- next is liaison reports. Um, I don't have anything at this time. Do you guys have anything?
Mr. Chair, I would, I would move that given the length of the, the evening, we would skip those for this evening.
You're a good man, Shelley Brown. Thanks, Rob. Um, are you okay with that, Mary Ann?
I am.
Uh, regular meeting minutes, June tenth, two thousand twenty-four?
I hereby move uh, that we uh, approve uh, the minutes, uh, regular meeting minutes for our June ten, twenty twenty-four meeting as written.
Second.
Roll call, Rob?
Hi.
Mary Ann?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right. Do we have any other business? Going before the board, uh, I can't, okay. I'm gonna assume that the eighty-two numbers that I see under the chatroom, we've already addressed those. There's nothing else under regular business. Uh, okay. Our next meeting will be on July tenth at six PM via Zoom. Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mary Ann?
Aye.
Rob?
Hi.
I vote aye as well. Thank you all very much.